Okay, good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 AM. We don't have a pastor here today, but we'll take a 30-second moment of silence, please. You may stand if you'd like. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I know that Commissioner, you said you were going to time me, but you didn't. It's May 8th, 2023. Going to open the joint meeting of the Nye County Board of Commissioners, Nye County Board of Highway Commissioners, Nye County Licensing and Liquor Board, Nye County Board of Health, as the governing body of the unincorporated town of Perump, governing body of the unincorporated towns of Beatty, Gabs, Manhattan, and as the Board of Trustees for the Perump Pool District. Commissioner Strickland, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. I understand I have two commissioners on the phone. Could I take role, please?
Commissioner Cox is here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Boskovic, are you on the line, please?
I have a hand raised, Chair. I don't think he called in with the pen, so...
I apologize. I need to get that other number. If somebody could text, I guess I'm here.
Well, it sounds like you.
I had the same problem.
Somebody please text Commissioner Boskovic with the other number, and then that way he doesn't have to raise his hand each time. Thank you. Thank you. And Commissioner Strickland? And Commissioner Carbone, Commissioner Jabar present here.
Carbone here.
Thank you. Number two, please, manager.
Item two, general public comment. Up to three-minute time limit per person. Action will not be taken on the matters considered during this period until specifically included on the agenda as an action item.
Go ahead, Mr. Lilly here in Perump, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dwight Lilly, L-I-O-L-L-Y. I could not find any backup material for the items where it says action could possibly be taken, and I don't know if this is an error in the agenda or what, but as per the open meeting laws, I requested item number 19 backup material, and I never received it. So I would kindly ask the Commissioners to not take any action on any items. There's not been backup material provided to the public. Another item I want to bring up is, I was at a meeting last Thursday, and it came to my attention, and I haven't paid that much attention, that the county's one most important effort on behalf of the citizens of Nye County and the legislature was to address commission pay. And I was shocked to have found that out. I don't know how I missed that. Back in 2012, in the summer, a lot of discussion about disbanding the town board, which was a voluntary board, and the county Commissioners at that time just said that, well, we can run the town and the county. It's a part-time job that you guys hold.
Excuse me, Mr. Lilly. Excuse me, sir. Number 19 is on the agenda, and so that may be discussed.
It's not going to take action on it. Also, there's going to be action taken under the open meeting laws.
Sir, this is your public comment, but please don't talk about things that are on the agenda.
Thank you, Commissioner Jabar.
Thank you, sir.
I will argue the point.
Please resume, though.
I'll just go by what the open meeting law says. But anyway, continuing on here. I'm a little concerned that Commissioners believe that the pay is not up to snuff. The only records I could find was for 2019 from a site that lists Commissioner pay, and I'm showing here that Commissioners with the benefits, the lowest was $39,000, and the highest was $56,000. I think that's pretty good pay for...
You're on the agenda item again, Mr. Lilly, for item number 19. Do you mind holding that comment until I...
What would you like to know about item 19?
What you're talking about.
What you're talking about is item 19, Dwight.
I don't have a problem with you talking about item 19. If you're going to take action, I did not get the backup material.
Hang on for a second. Item 19 you're talking about is on the agenda. You're talking about an agenda item during your public comment. You need to hold your public comment for 19 when 19 comes up.
Yeah, but it doesn't say about the legislative action, item number 19. Does it? I mean, maybe I read it wrong. There's no backup material or anything.
You're still talking about item 19.
Talking about elected officials.
I'm talking about the legislative effort that you people made regarding Commissioner pay.
Which is directly related to the Commissioners'.
Maybe the district attorney can address it. Because if I'm wrong, I apologize sincerely. I'm not here to cause any problem. I just want my rights under the Constitution upheld. Does that say anything about the legislative action?
They have to make a determination as to whether or not they have the funds sufficient to provide for an increase in salary. So if that's what you're talking about, that is part of our number 19, what they're telling you is, please come back during number 19s and make your public comment during that period of time, not during general public comment.
Right, I understand that, but I'm addressing the legislative item. And my comments regarding that. I'll bring up comments on item 19 when it comes up, if I feel I need to. If you don't want me to talk about it, I won't, and I'll just go on here. And because I have another item. The other item I wanted to talk about was the tiny house plan that I became aware of. And I believe in charity. I believe that we should take care of widows, orphans, children, make sure that they're housed and cared for. But I don't think it's right for the county to be, whether it was requested or whatever, taking funding in the name of me as the taxpayer in Nye County and addressing what I consider a ghetto-type situation. Now, President Johnson approached this way back decades ago, said, well, we'll help the cities with housing issues, and we ended up with a nightmare, and I don't want to see a nightmare in my town. So that's the comment I have to make on that. And that is all. I'll wait till item number 19. And I hope you guys ponder that while I'm sitting down.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly.
Thank you.
Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
Yes, Chair. The caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Nicole Walters, N-I-C-H-O-L-E-W-A-L-T-E-R-S. I am with No Opinion News, which can be found at www.joshwhotv.com/channel/noopinionnews. I am calling in today because I got a flat tire, or I would be there with you guys. I am hearing from multiple people that there's both issues with DEA billing and Great Basin water billing, and now people are having hefty bills. And I'm just wondering how people in the community are going to be able to afford all of this at once. Is there going to be a lenient so that way, you know, people don't get shut off? Because, you know, I have a friend that has a $320 water bill that she just got dropped on, you know, that, you know, some people can't afford that in one month just to put on a water bill. I'm worried about the people in our community and making sure that they continually do good. A few other things. You know, we've been trying to deal with the schools and making sure that our kids are getting a good education. When in our, in the U.S., we have children that are being forced to work, that are migrants, that are being brought across the border. And, you know, I've seen videos of the border security saying that, you know, they need help. Well, the U.S. is sending help to check these people in quicker. We need to close our borders to keep the U.S. safe. If not, I look at it as an invasion. I don't know if you all see it that way, but that's what, you know, a lot of people are seeing it as, and nothing is being done. Other than that, on May 20th, the Republican Party is having $8 at the Nugget. Tickets are $75 apiece. If you would like to come join us. Wayne Allen Root will be there. And I think that's about it. Thank you, guys, and have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump, tone upon on the phone, I will close public comment. And move on to number three, please, manager.
Item three, Commissioner manager comments. This item limited to announcements or topic issues proposed for future workshops and agendas.
Commissioner Cox, do you have anything, please?
Oh, I had a comment, and it went by me while I was listening to Nicole. I'm sorry.
That's all.
Oh, I agree with what you say. Thank you.
I will go on to another Commissioner and come back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Boskovic.
Thank you, Chair. I don't have anything other than our pre-budget meeting last week was very enlightening, to say the least. But thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Carbone?
The only comment I have, it's not an agenda item, but I just wish folks would read a little bit more of the detailed information that we do put out in regards to tiny homes. There's nothing that we've said anything about putting a tiny home park together for the homeless. So just letting everybody realize they need to read instead of assuming when you hear something on Facebook. So thank you very much.
Commissioner, Commissioner Strickland?
Thank you for taking that up, Commissioner Carbone, because we have been receiving a lot of phone calls. Apparently, people thought we were going to put a tiny home park in the center of town, and that's not the decision that was made at that meeting. I have one announcement. On Saturday, the 13th, at noon, the Seroptimus of Perump Valley will be having a fashion show at the Sanders Winery. It's $25, and I'm hoping you all can attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the public callers mentioned Valley Electric and Great Basin. I have a well here in Perump, but I do have a Valley Electric bill in account I've had for many years. And I got a late payment, and I looked at it and did my research. And so I know exactly what she's talking about. I was certainly not late. They generated an invoice three days after I paid my bill and then penalized me. So what I did was I cut another check, and I hand-delivered it. And now they're going to have to do more work because they're going to have to credit me that money and generate another invoice, a more accurate invoice. So they're putting more burden on themselves on their process. It's just sitting on somebody's desk, or they're not going to the kiosk or that drop box often enough. And so I understand what you're saying, Ms. Walters. And unfortunately, not everybody's in the position to be able to just go and write another check, and it is a lot of money, especially with the pay increases of power, all of the utilities and everything that we're facing throughout the nation. So, good morning, everybody here in Nye County. Thank you for joining us on the phone and here in person. And yes, I will go back to Commissioner Cox. Did you remember what you wanted to mention?
Yes. One of the things was the so-called low-cost housing that people have been advertising that we've been approving. That is not true. These homes that they want to build, they're tiny homes, but they're really nice homes. And low-income people will not qualify. Homeless people will not qualify because these people have to buy these, and they're all $60,000 and up, so therefore they have to have credit, they have to have down payments, they have to be able to make a payment. No, this is not a homeless program, which I was hoping to discuss today about maybe some homeless. But this is not a homeless program. All we did was try to pick a solution to where they could be put. It's a zoning issue at this point. It may never come to fruition, which I wouldn't really care one way or the other. It's, I don't consider it an asset to the town, but still, not everybody wants to live the same lifestyle, and they have a choice this way. So somebody out there spreading that this is a homeless project, and we're going to put them all over town, and believe me, that person is just being vindictive or vicious over other matters. It has nothing to do with this. There's more behind it than that, and he needs to stop. He is not telling the people out here the truth, number one. Number two, watch your water bills because sometimes you can have a broken pipe on your side of the meter, and that's why all of a sudden your bill went sky-high. I've had those issues in the past, especially during the winter when we have freezes. Some people's pipes are too close to the surface, and they will freeze on you. And then it's stuck on your bill because it's on your side of the meter. If you have any other issues with it, contact the water company and have them replace the meter. Same way with the electric. Call them and tell them to replace the meter because sometimes meters go bad, and then they don't know it, and you get stuck with the bill. Other than that, I would, I encourage the people to get together and do a petition or do a protest against the hikes rates on your water bill and your electric bill if you feel there's been any big change. Everything's going up. We're in trouble, folks. Everything's going up, except our pay. And that's fact with everybody, not just county people, but that's a fact with all of you out there. Your pay is not going up. You can see where we're headed. And hopefully, something's going to stop it soon. It's election year, so you know how these things go. Anyway, that's my two cents. And thank you, Nicole. I appreciate you calling in and bringing these to everybody's attention. Okay, I'm done. Go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox.
Thank you.
And I will expound just a little bit, and I'll remind everybody that was here or was not here, is that Director Wagner, when we were speaking about tiny homes, asked us for direction. And the direction was to go out and gather as much research and information as possible on tiny home park. And he gave us three options to choose from. And one was a casita-type scenario. One was a tiny home to be placed on a piece of property, on a parcel, and the other was a tiny home park. And that was the direction that we gave. That's what we voted on, was to ask and direct staff, planning staff, to go out and gather as much information as possible so we can make a good decision and go forward. So thank you for that. County Clerk Comf, please.
Yes, just remind the citizens of Nye County that last week I put out an announcement to request members of the community to join a committee to review the ballot question regarding the diesel tax. And so we're looking for members of the community to volunteer to be on a committee to come up with arguments for, and another committee to come up with arguments against. The applications are due by June 2nd, and you can contact the county clerk's office at 775-482-8127 for an application, or you can send me an email at mcomf@nycountynv.gov, or you can apply online on the clerk's website. So we're looking forward to having some citizens that participate in this committee. I know it's a little early for the election, but I want to make sure we get a jump on this and we complete the work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clerk. Director Wagner, please.
Morning, Commissioners. This is Director Wagner, W-A-G-G-O-N-E-R. Thank you for addressing the tiny home rumor out there. The only thing I'm going to add, just for clarity, is that no part of that conversation had anything to do with a county-sponsored or town-sponsored tiny home park, or nor did it have anything to do with the homeless or addressing that. So I just wanted to clarify that. Second thing is, I'm going to respectfully withdraw my planning item and my request at this time with the expectation that I can bring it back later in the year. I'm going to discuss with finance and H.R. some other funding possibilities, maybe some restructuring to try to cover that position because I still do believe it's a needed position. It would help the county in tighter regulation of some of our privileged licenses, which could only really result in revenue.
We can discuss that when we get to that item.
Well, I'm withdrawing it, so.
So you're done.
I'm just requesting that it be a future item later.
Of course. Appreciate any other department heads that'd like to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Is there any manager or director on the phone, please, Sam? Public comment only.
No, there's nobody on the phone, but I did want to address a few things, if I may.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Agenda items 19 and 20 are annual items pursuant to NRS that must be heard and considered, and they do not have any backup. So there is nothing missing.
Okay, thank you, manager. Appreciate it. Okay, hearing and seeing no other manager or director comments, I will close. Close number three and move on to number four, please.
Item four, approval of the agenda for May 8th, 2023. And on page one, we will remove item five. Page two will remove items 21 and 22. And I will repeat that. Page one, item five, and items 21 and 22.
Thank you, manager. Okay. Sitting as the governing board of the unincorporated town of Perump, I'd like to open number six and number 18, please, manager.
Item six, for possible action, presentation, discussion, and deliberation to review and approve the Town of Perump final budget assumptions for fiscal year 2023, 2024. And item 18, presentation, discussion, and deliberation to review and approve the Nye County final budget assumptions for fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Elizabeth Jordan for Nye County Finance. Before we begin, I wanted to actually thank a few people that have helped me through this process because it was not a small task. So I want to, of course, thank the Finance Department because this year, of course, budget took precedence over a lot of projects. So our team has been wonderful in handling all other items that do not pertain to budgets. But special thanks to Elizabeth and Diana, who had hands-on working on this with me. Also, the H.R. Department, Alona and Ryan, helped me tremendously with the positions with Nye County and all other towns. Of course, Admin has been very patient with me and helping me with all this backup and getting our agenda item all included. And of course, all the departments throughout Nye County because they've been very patient with me during this time that budget has taken all of my time. So I wanted to express my thanks to all of them and understanding for being patient with me, of course. And of course, the Commissions, you guys have been great with all your questions as well as meeting with me, you know, to have any, have a small meeting on the budget. So I appreciate your time on that.
Thank you, Liz.
But without any further ado, we'll go through the budget presentation for Nye County as well as the Town of Perump. So Janie, if you want to put the presentation up for us? Give us one second as we make this a little bigger, full screen. Okay, very good. So as you can see, this is, we'll start with Nye County, but a lot of these items affects both the town and Nye County. So that's why I had to ask the Chair to open both items. Next slide. So during the budgetary process, there was a few issues that we had to take into consideration and needed to be brought to the front of the entire process into consideration. So net proceeds, we know that in the past, we've seen a substantial decline in net proceeds for the county that affects Nye County and all the entities, including Gabs, Beatty, Manhattan, the Hospital District, and everybody that receives net proceeds. So that was a huge impact. As we know, during the audit item, unrealized investment losses were substantial. And by statute, we do have to recognize them in our budget process. They are not in our books as losses. However, we do have to take them into account when budgeting. Police fire pers, in both police fire and regular pers, we did see a substantial increase. Police fire was 6%, and pers contribution was 3.75%. Of course, that affects anybody or in all the funds within Nye County, and again, all the town's employees as well. Health insurance, this year, in fiscal '24, we will see an increase of 3%. That was also taken into account when preparing for fiscal '24 tentative budgets. So these were some of our huge hits that we saw. So I wanted to bring those to the forefront. Next slide.
May I?
Yes.
When you're talking about net proceeds, mostly that is because our mining has been not paying as well as it has in the past?
Correct. Either not producing. So if they see a decline in their production and what is reported, that affects, of course, all our revenues. In the past, we had seen a $2.2 million to the General Fund alone. Last year, as if you remember, it was cut in half to about 1.1. Fiscal '23, we have budgeted, I believe, at $235,000.
Substantial hit.
Substantial hit.
Thank you.
And fiscal '24, we are slated to receive $55,000. So huge hit, substantial from two years ago.
Right. And again, the mines are not producing. The gold mine won't be producing for quite a while, if any, because their contract looks like it might be ending soon. And again, if they do anything, they'll be doing their tailings, which will not be taxable. Lithium mines, lithium mines right now are not producing very much of anything. So when that happens, if lithium starts going, there may be a change. Again, you're right. We're kind of at the point where we're taking a huge hit. And that's where certain dollars goes to supplies and services type stuff, so.
Correct. Out of the Nye County General Fund, net proceeds is reseeded into the General Fund. However, we immediately transfer that to capital, and that's what has been funding our capital for the past years. As you can see, with a $55,000 forecasted budget that we're slated to receive in fiscal '24, that explains where our capital will be.
And that's, you know, most of the folks that are going to be coming up and talking about their items, they need to understand that is an issue.
Correct.
Thank you. Excuse me, Liz, before you move on, I have one question. You mentioned the health insurance costs.
Correct.
So I know that we switched companies last year.
Yes.
And that was a savings.
Correct.
Now we're projecting that we're going back up 3%.
Correct.
So can you tell us, and I know Alona is in the audience, of what was our savings in regards to percentage-wise? So everybody can see how diligently you've been working in different areas, right? To try to save and help the county financially.
Yes. So in the past, we had our, I don't have the exact percentages of the difference between... between the changes in fiscal year '22 versus fiscal year '23. I can get the exact figures, but we did see a, roughly a $500,000 savings when we switched over. Now, of course, that's, now will be increased by three percent from our savings. And of course, we should always foreplan that we may see an increase in '25. Of course, we don't know.
Yes.
But due to what we have seen in the market as far as inflation, CPI increases, it's something that we should always look at the forefront.
Yes, but we're still good.
Yes.
What you just said, we're still good in regards to the decision that was made.
Correct, definitely. We did, like I said, see a substantial savings when we switched over. However, now, of course, there's a bit of increase of three percent, but yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next slide, if we can go back. Okay, next, issues that are still happening, we saw some of these in fiscal year '23, and of course, we do, I'm sorry, we saw some of these in fiscal year '22, have moved into '23, and we are expecting this to continue in '24 because we have not seen a slowdown in inflation as well as interest rates. Last week, the federal government have increased the interest rate by a quarter of percent. Obviously, rumors are that they will slow down, but we don't know what that is. But we have seen an increase in interest rates. Supply chain issues have continued, and obviously, if you talk to some of our departments, some of our capital projects, either whether our vehicles or projects themselves, we've seen delays because of that supply issue. Of course, historical inflation, as we all know, going to the supermarket, that's the number one thing you've seen, as well as just shopping for regular day-to-day things. We do forecast a slowdown in spending due to the interest rate increase and the inflation with people spending more on their necessities. We do foresee that on your entertainment, we may see a slowdown. Spending money on other non-necessity items may be a slowdown. But those are what we foresee in fiscal '24.
An example would be a simple thing like we had gotten a grant to acquire two cattle guards. And by the time we got around to ordering the cattle guards, we could no longer afford two. And to go ahead and reapply for an additional money to have sufficient money to make that happen. By the time we get that sufficient money, we may not have enough money still for two cattle guards.
Yeah.
And this just goes on and on and on when it comes to supply chain. Thank you, Chair.
That's a great example, yes.
There is other things that are out there. I mean, we talked about unfunded mandates, we talked about, you know, things that we do just to make sure people, we give the public something to do and something to have. Some of those things will be discussed during this meeting, too, so hang on to your pants.
Okay, next slide. Fiscal '24, we'll go over the revenue assumptions that I've made when preparing the tentatives. Of course, this is nothing, these are not, this will be direction to staff, so nothing of this is set in stone. However, with all the requirements that we have in place to, that we need to fulfill, have been taken into account. If we go to the next slide. The first one is a historical information on the assessed valuation. As you can see, the orange is the net proceeds that the county used to receive, and I shouldn't say used to because we still are receiving it. However, as you can see in fiscal year '24, that orange color is almost nonexistent. It's there, but it's in a substantial cut in the figures. We go to the next slide?
Before you go there?
Yes.
Go back to that slide. If you look at 2014, 15, and 16, this is when we had another crisis within the United States, but this hit us later than 2008. So we got really hurt, and you can see how that, how things got better. But as time goes on, we're starting to see it kind of come back again.
Correct, and great point, Commissioner. I left those years in there. Those were the years that the county did have to take a really close look at our finances. At that point, we were not receiving the, at the time, it was property taxes that unfortunately people were defaulting on their homes, and property taxes, of course, is correct, related, of course, to having that home. So we saw a significant decrease in our property tax revenues at that time. As you can see, it has increased. And fiscal year '21 has been our highest revenue for property taxes, but as you can see, the next two years, we're hoping it's not a pattern, but the numbers are there.
That's what we're worried about. Another quarter percent in interest could stop certain things. That's what we're worried about.
Next slide. With revenues, two of the biggest revenues that we receive are de-tax, are forecasted to receive the property taxes at $2.2 million, I'm sorry, $22 million. And I am budgeting 100% of de-tax forecast. Historically, we've outpaced the de-tax figures, however, I don't want to inflate those numbers. I want us to be a little bit conservative with those. Also, with de-tax forecasts of the net proceeds, I am budgeting 100% of that. But however, as I explained before, those are transferred to the general, or I'm sorry, to the capital fund once those funds are received. Consolidated taxes, those are the obvious purchases that the community does, we receive a portion of those consolidated taxes, and I am budgeting 100% of those forecasted by de-tax. Next slide. Two other points that I wanted to make, that one of the revenues that we receive is PILT. It's payment in lieu of taxes. And for fiscal year '23, we budgeted at $3.7 million because our census data says that we're at 50,000 residents or higher. I have done a bit of research with the Department of, I'm sorry, skip my name, the name at the moment, but the Interior, I'm sorry, Department of the Interior, and they have allocated the funds, however, I have not seen the breakdown. So what I would suggest for fiscal '24 is that we budget at the same levels. Historically, we've received $2.8 million to 3.5. So budgeting a little bit higher at 3.7 is not out of the question for the population for Knight County.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Knowing that this BLM has been putting out applications, and I haven't had anybody been able to verify, and I've been talking to BLM, but they're not, we don't know what the government's doing in regards to those properties that are being removed. So, you know, we're losing a big piece of property to NASA, so eventually, that's going to start hurting us in regards to how much money we get.
Mr. Chair, I can respond to that.
Yes, please.
So if the property is leased, it's still going, the acreage will be included in the PILT calculation, but if it's sold to the project proponent, it's removed, but then becomes taxable property.
That was the answer I was looking for. Nobody wanted to answer that question.
I'd really like to receive the lease that BLM's receiving instead of our patents of
Please continue, Liz.
Thank you. The rest of the revenue that we received, I am forecasting based on the growth formula that we've applied in the previous years. I don't see substantial increase or decrease on those areas, which include licensing permits, things of those sorts. So I don't see any issues there. Any questions on the revenue side?
No, it helped a lot to have a pre-budget meeting. Thank you, Liz.
Next slide. And we will move into the expenditure side of things, and keep in mind, this is for general fund only in the Knight County. In these details for the expenditure side, on the salaries and benefits, on all the positions I've, in the budget, I've calculated all the positions, including all the stepped increase, including existing positions filled or vacant, longevity, boot allowances, things of those sorts. I've also included the 3% medical that we're seeing throughout the county, as well as a 6% police-fire increase in purse, 3.75 in regular purse, the cost of living increases based on our agreed CBAs, the agreements that we have in place. I did not make any changes on the workman's comp or the self-insurance that we have within Knight County, and I budgeted zero overtime. Next slide. On our services and supplies, previously, we have applied the CPI increase for fiscal year '24. I'm calculating that at 6.5 CPI increase, and that is, will be applied to fuel, operating expenses, travel, things of those sorts, day-to-day. Contractual will be increased based on the contract. As you can imagine, we did see an increase in most of our contracts with Knight County. The services and supplies, we do a smooth average, a smooth historical average with all departments, and of course, taken into account that 6.5 CPI increase. And the risk management, if you recall, we have a risk management fund where a lot of the funds within Knight County, including some of our towns, fund the risk management, and this is the cost-sharing allocation for Knight County. And I kept that at the 4.75 as last year or previous fiscal '23. Next slide. On our continual general fund expenses, we complete transfers out from the general fund into other funds based on the operation. For example, we transfer $100,000 into our compensated absences. For fiscal '24, I did not budget anything for the stabilization fund, just based on our ending fund balance, and I won't get to that part. However, that's at the pleasure of the board. We can amend that portion of it. The operating transfer as well to the health clinics, they are seeing a small decrease in their revenue, and fiscal '23, we budgeted that $65,000. In fiscal '24, I am seeing that same need to include that as well. And the $5.5 million that is transferred from the general fund into the general, I'm sorry, into the jail fund for their operation is also included. Next slide. This is additional transfers that we do. Of course, there is the net proceed that'd be transferred to capital. I have built in a 2% contingency in fiscal '23. If you recall, we did a 3% based on the figures and all the additional increases. I did not feel that it was possible to do the 3%, so I lowered it to 2% to make sure we can balance our budget and stay within that required ending fund balance. So the 2% would be $911,000. Debt service, this is where we pay our shelter and Siemens bond payment, and that is transferred from the general fund to our debt service fund. And of course, the total of all our transfers and contingencies are as well. Any questions so far? Next slide. This is the Knight County ending fund balance. Unfortunately, as you can see, from fiscal year '21 to forecasted fiscal year '24, it's a substantial decrease. Our revenues are, as I explained, are still on par of what we had forecasted and what we're seeing in fiscal year '24 as well, with the exception of net proceeds. However, our expenditures, our obligations are definitely outpacing our revenues or ability to generate revenues faster, and that's what's causing our ending fund balance to be chipped away year after year. Fiscal year '22, you can see that decrease, and then, of course, fiscal year '23 continued, and fiscal year '24 is forecasted to continue. With the additional increases that we saw, of course, that did not help matters as well. A couple of things that I wanted to point out and that I left in here, as you can see, fiscal year '14 was $622,000. I did not keep it on this graph, but fiscal year '12, I believe, was at $62,000 ending fund balance. So those are key things that I looked at.
You told me during the meeting, $258,000.
Fiscal year '12. Yes, that was the budgeted. The actual, when I went back and looked at the audit, was $64,000.
Thank you.
So I did a little bit of historical digging in there to see what information I can present to the board of where we have been, where we are, and where we could potentially be going with the, all the different items that affected our budget this year and to take into consideration. Any questions so far before we go to the next slide? Next slide. So to wrap up just slightly the general fund, these are the items that I was able to include with all our obligations. Again, those are the items that I've already talked about. If we go to the next page, these are what the figures are looking like. The first line there, beginning fund balance, this is what I'm forecasting fiscal year '23 to end the year this way, with the $8.7 million. The revenues there, $50 million is the forecasted revenues for fiscal '24. And all the functions, including salaries, benefit, services, and supplies for the county, are estimated at $45,566,000. And the next, the next lines are all our transfers. And the very last number there is our forecasted ending fund balance for fiscal year '24 with the assumptions that I've made and no additional added services or positions.
Again, this is today.
Correct.
People are, what we're actually spending today and what we're getting today.
Correct. And that is with, like I said, all the existing positions, all the, all the existing positions and all the obligations that we currently have.
So just, it's a sad picture for everybody if they're out there is looking at it.
Well, what it amounts to is if you take your beginning fund balance, your ending fund balance, it's costing us an additional $2.672 million to operate.
Yep.
This year. We're going into our savings account, basically, to operate this year. Thank you.
And I will continue with the town of Perump because it does, there are similar items, of course, between the two funds, so if we can continue on. items, of course, between the two funds, so if we can continue on with the town of Perump. We go to the next page? I'm sorry, yes, item six. The town of Perump, the property taxes, net proceeds are budgeted at 100% based on our numbers from Department of Taxation. I did include for the town of Perump as well the 6.5 CPI increase for services and supplies. I did not include any requested positions from the town of Perump. And just something to keep in mind that, and this goes, of course, for Knight County as well, that the town of Perump and Knight County can augment any revenues or expenditures that we may see during the fiscal year '24. I did include all the negotiated agreements with all our CBAs for fiscal year '24 for both Knight County and the town of Perump as well.
Well, we have one CBA that's not completed its arguments yet, so.
Yes, and that's one of the items that I wanted to have the board keep in mind. We actually have three bargaining units that are in negotiations at the moment, so these numbers are based on current. We don't know what those negotiations will, how they will impact our budget, but something to keep in mind that that is a, something to consider.
Correct.
I know one of the departments from town of Perump did express the need of personnel, of course, but based on, because of the negotiation process that they're going through, they're waiting, so just something to consider. Next slide. These are the figures for the town of Perump. Again, the beginning fund balance as we forecast for fiscal year '23, the revenues of $6.9 million. $6 million is the total function, again, for salaries, benefits, services, and supplies. And $1.9 million is their operating transfers that we complete to other funds. As you can see, the cemetery receives $100,000 from the general fund, and that's to complete any projects in fiscal year '23. As you know, we've just completed the cemetery. I'm not sure what the name of it is yet, but the building, memorial building, thank you. That was completed due to these transfers that occur, so that was a great completion there. Capital, I am budgeting $1.5 million to transfer from the general fund to the capital fund, just understanding some of the needs they have, and we do have projects that have been brought forward that I'm doing that transfer. Of course, the county commissioners have the option to either increase or decrease. The ambulance fund, there's a small transfer of $300,000 that is transferred from the general fund for operating into the ambulance fund. And again, we do a 3% contingency of $180,000, and the ending fund balance for town of Perump for fiscal '24, $1.2 million estimated.
So unlike the Knight County, the town of Perump is ahead.
Yes.
A million dollars and change.
Yes, and. Correct. And I estimated higher on the capital project. In the past, we've seen a million to 1.2 transferred over. Because they can afford a little bit more of the transfer for the capital projects, I increased it a small increase to $1.5 million. But yes, we're not seeing the problem in the town of Perump, because we do have less positions within the town, so a lot of the obligations, we're not seeing, of course, the higher impact in those. They are, of course, as well, with the fire, police-fire, and regular purse, seeing that increase in purse as well, but they have, like I said, less positions, so it's not greatly affected on the financials as it is for Knight County. With everything said, any questions so far?
Commissioner Cox or Boskovich, do you have any questions for our comptroller, please?
I have a question. How many open positions do we have right now that are budgeted but not yet filled?
Doggone it. Commissioner, sitting on your desk is a readout that we received this morning. I'm going to ask staff to email it to you, please. Do you have that? Does he have that?
Yes.
You received an email. Do you see that?
Okay. Yes, thank you very much. And along those lines, the staff we have right now are working their butts off and doing a great job, but we are managing. My point is, do we need to fill all of those, or can the department heads, like Director Wagner did earlier, look at this and decide if that's something that they need to do right now, or, you know, just give it, give it some thought moving forward? My second thought is, along these same lines, is it's very clear to me we need to initiate a freeze on any new hiring at this point. That's just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cox?
No, I pretty much heard everything, and we're going to have to work with what we've got and what we're not going to get in the future. So I think we're going to do all right, though. We've got some really good people with good ideas, and I put my faith in them because we hired them, because they know what they're doing, and they know better than we do. So they're just our guys, and I appreciate everything they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners?
I have nothing, thank you.
Yeah, there is, basically, when Commissioner Boskovich brought up the hiring freeze, you know, we went through this once before where we would make sure that if somebody was going to be hired, we would keep them at bay until we could at least pay back that position. So those are things that we probably need to be looking at as well. As far as overtime is concerned, I know you zeroed out overtime. If you recall, there's a lot of open spaces in the fire, the sheriff's department. Right now, most of the pay for those people that are doing overtime is coming out of these positions that have not been filled. So we're going to have to figure out if they're going to fill those positions or not going to fill those positions. We need to understand where we're going with that, especially if you're zeroing out overtime. So, I mean, understanding that is an issue, so I think the sheriff's department needs to understand what that means.
If I may, Commissioner, in the last three years, we have not budgeted overtime for the sheriff's office, and they have been able to manage some of their overtime with those vacant positions. Unfortunately, that's a twofold problem, and maybe the sheriff's office can speak more to that. But of course, with the positions being vacant, they do have to cover backfilled with some of the open positions, and that.
If you recall, last year, they asked for $400,000 in overtime funds. So they're going to ask, but again, we're in that same situation. We just need to make sure we're on, we're on our toes when they're asking questions.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. Let me open this up for public comment, please. Do we have any public comment on the phone, please, Sam?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted. Please speak and spell your name for the record.
Wait, Lilly.
Mr. Lilly, one moment, I have somebody on the phone, and then I'll come to you. Thank you, sir. Go ahead, caller. Ask them to, we'll ask you to call back. You may have, you may have disconnected. Call back, and I will go to Mr. Lilly here in Perump, public comment on number six and number 18.
Am I up?
Yes, sir.
Lilly, L-I-L-Y. I didn't see mention of the item on, maybe it's somewhere in the debt part of your projections there. We had somewhere around $80 million of unfunded retiree benefits that had been brought up and discussed deeply during this commission in the back, and also, there was an emergency plan that had been discussed and had not been funded. And I was wondering where in the budget proposal for 2024 those items are going to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone now, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Here in Perump, please state and spell your last name, please, for the record.
Hi, my name is Candace Hunt, C-A-N-D-A-C-E-H-U-N-T, and I had a question on slide nine, which relates to the zero projections for overtime as well. Is there any historical data on what overtime each one of these departments has paid in the past few years?
Pardon me, this is not a question-and-answer. This is for you to give comment, please.
I'm concerned that there's not data here for the zero projection for overtime. It would seem to me that there, we saw some projections in past data on a lot of these fiscal items on the list, but on slide nine, I didn't see anything or anything in the budget of what was an overage as it came to overtime for our public health and safety for Perump and Knight County, so that would be my concern. Thanks.
We can get the answer for you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone now, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump, Tona Parton on the phone, I would close public comment.
If we can go back to the slide, there was two, two slides that I wanted to put up, and these were at the request of some of our commissioners. If we go to the next slide, these are just some budget considerations that we've put together or that I put together based on items that have worked and that the county had put in place, that I wanted to put those up for everybody, as well as, I know there's been talks about the impact fees or looking at some of our fees within Knight County to review those fee schedules, so I included that as well. The next slide is all our county services. These are services, of course, that the county currently provides. The one with the star or the asterisk are state mandates that we must provide, of course, within the county, but everything else is non-mandated. However, of course, as a county, we choose to provide and do for the community. So just, I know one of the commissioners had asked for these, so we make sure we included that for, for your consideration as well. But those were the last two.
Again, unfunded mandates are the ones with the asterisk, correct?
Correct.
So you can see the ones that we're being told that we have to do without any compensation from the state. So those are items that were coming out of your taxes, basically by demand from the state. The other ones are niceties, in some cases, that we're paying for out of taxes. And again, these are items that could be looked at. I can tell you, we looked at a lot of these back in 2014, '15, and some of them went away and some of them came back, so never can tell.
Correct. And some of those services that we provide are either a portion of the tax rate is allocated to them, or we also do transfers within the general fund to those services.
Correct.
But that is all I have.
Thank you, Comptroller. Thank you, Commissioners. Looking for a motion to approve presentation, both, and please be specific, Knight County as well as Perump.
Yeah, make a motion to approve items number six, and item six, which is the town of Perump, and item number 18, which is the item for the town of, excuse me, the Knight County, which includes the towns within the county.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, I'll call for the vote, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Carboni, aye. Jaborz, aye. Number six and number 18 pass, five zero. Number 13, please, manager.
Item 13, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the Perump Justice Court.
Good morning, Judge. Please press the button.
There we go.
State and spell your last name for the record, please.
Thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Michelle Fiori, F as in flower, I-O-R-E, and I am here to talk about our Perump Justice Court, and I first have to give kudos to Mr. Wagner. I really understand that we are in a crunch, and we all have to really pull our bootstraps up and make sure we get through this budget and work together. And as we have done our budget, I also want to just state for the record, and I think it's very important, and this might be out of order, but the commissioners are grossly undercompensated in Knight County. We are the largest county in this state, the third-largest county in America. I want you to grasp that for a minute. So this is something that has to take precedent and priority over, like knocking agenda item 20 off, totally agree with that, until we get our commissioners whole. It's, and I've looked at everything. You guys don't know that I've looked at things, but as a judge, I look at, I looked at everything here, moving here. So I'm going to go into our budget now. We need it to, we need a lot, because in 2009, you guys appointed another justice of the peace. And since 2009 to 2023, we've grown 1,000 people per year in population, give or take. And when you look at that, we've got an additional 10,000 folks. We've maybe gotten one or two more clerks in that timeframe, but not enough to keep up with the crime. But here's what I'm going to say. I'm new out here. We've asked for what we needed, but I want to cut that right. I want to cut it to the bare minimum of what we actually really need. We asked for four clerks. Forget it. Forget the four clerks, right? We asked for two bailiffs, two additional bailiffs, because we only have two, and we're having a really hard time with sick timer taking off. Forget it. Forget the bailiffs. Forget the clerks. What, what we actually really need to, we can figure out a revenue generating source for this county, is we need our three hierarchy, which is our Connie Foss, Jamie Robnett, and Alisa Schultz. Alisa's been with the county for 20 years. Connie and Jamie combined over 20 years. We need to move their positions and make them whole. They are struggling. They are working huge, huge, like they're coming in on Fridays. I don't mind coming in Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, but I can't do what they do. There are court clerks, I'm just the judge. So when we looked at our budget, and Judge Vito and I just stepped outside after hearing your numbers, and we said, we can't possibly ask for anything that we absolutely don't need. So I need Alisa Schultz to get whole, Jamie and Connie, Jamie, Robnett, and Connie Foss to get whole, and we will let everything else go, right? We'll just, we'll forget the bailiffs, forget the clerks, forget everything else on our budget, but those are the top three priorities of the Justice Perump Court, and I agree with letting item 20 go, too.
Judge, thank you. Thank you, Judge. For Chair.
Go ahead. I do. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Excuse me, Judge, could you tell us what you mean by bringing them whole?
Oh, yes.
Please.
Alisa, I want, I want Alisa Schultz to give you the numbers, and here's another thing, an unattended great revenue consequence, the AB 116. And here's another thing, an unattended great revenue consequence, the AB one sixteen, with the, with the court services and the fees. Hopefully, this is gonna grow. January, we had thirteen hundred go into the GF. February, we had like, I don't know, twenty-three. Eight, March, we had some other like forty-five hundred, April, we had forty-five thousand. So hopefully, we can get the Justice Court to pay for itself. So I'm gonna give this to Elisa Schultz right now and explain where we need to be for Jamie, Connie, and you. Just where you are at fifteen needs to be eighteen, they need to be fifteen. So.
Please, spell your last name, Alicia.
First name is Elisa, last name is Schultz, S-H-O-U-L-T-S. I guess to be, looking at, we need to create the chief clerk position for the Perump Justice Court, which has never actually existed. And we wanted to create that at a grade fifteen, which would require the Justice Court Administrator to be bumped up. We were looking at a grade eighteen. The, two, two chief clerks, one for each judge. One for Department A, one for Department B.
And they are there right now.
Yeah, just gonna upgrade them.
Yeah. And they've literally, we have over forty years of Nye County, ten with Jamie. She's gonna be on the.
You're, you're not on record.
We have forty years of three women, twenty with Ms. Schultz, ten with Ms. Foss, and ten with Ms. Robnett. These women have worked tirelessly for, you know, it's really difficult.
One more, I'm sorry, one more person, you need to upgrade, correct?
Just three.
Well, you just hit two, so you need one more.
It's Elisa, two chiefs, and then change her, because she's, she's at this, she can't go anywhere.
So you want all three to be chiefs?
No.
Okay, that's why I'm asking the question.
Currently, the Justice Court Administrator position is at a grade fifteen.
Okay.
So you'd have to increase that grade to higher, which we were looking at an eighteen.
So you got.
And then we, the only place would be to put the chief clerk at the fifteen.
Fifteen, got it. So the two are gonna be at the fifteen, and one's gonna be at the eighteen, is what I'm hearing?
All right, so currently.
Does that, does that sound the same to you?
Yep, currently, you have a law clerk position that is a fifteen, that has been posted.
We do not have a law clerk position, I think District Court does.
Okay, take me, Elona, to where I need to be on this open list, please. Where am I going to be on this open list? If they have positions open, because I just looked at District, oh, E, I see, I'm a district, no wonder, let me see if I can find it. I don't see any.
Elona Goldner, G-O-L-D-N-E-R, I don't show any open positions for Justice Court.
There isn't, there isn't any.
Okay, that's what I want to check on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I, I went to District Court on the sheet.
Oh, okay.
Instead of, glasses are gray.
All right, okay, thanks.
I do want to point out, though, that positions are all negotiated, so the rankings and stuff do have to go be negotiated.
So we're talking with the union?
Correct.
So this is a union matter?
Yes.
This is not a commission matter?
Well, yes, not even us yet, right?
Every position's grade is approved by the union.
Are they currently in negotiations on their contracts?
No, not until twenty-five.
When are they up for negotiation, twenty-five? So that's when this would be considered?
So let's.
It's not that it couldn't be considered ahead of time, it just has to go through the union.
Right, we, we have a process where those upgrades come through the process, through a normal process, coming through you and going through the process, everybody gets to look at it all the way up to the county manager. So do we have the funds in order to move them up to those grades? That's what they're questioning.
Elizabeth Jordan, if the unions approve those, those positions to be created, the job descriptions and.
Hold on, would you silence your telephone, please? Mute your telephone, please. Thank you.
And once those positions are approved, it would be up to the board to approve the funding, is what we're looking for right now. The funding would come at the moment, would either, from my assumptions of reducing that ending fund balance or reducing the contingency.
Exactly. So again, there's a process, we, we are not even close to that, but those recommendations need to go to the union, and then we'll go from there. But again, they're gonna be asking for that funding.
For the record, I believe that Ms. Schultz has been asking for this for a year already. So, and it hasn't budget, or it hasn't moved, and it's been a little rough, right? We just had a, we just had one of our employees had to go to New Zealand because her dad died, and we couldn't even get her paid for it, right? And it's, it's, it's rough, so these are some of, and again, I will not ask you for things that we could do without.
Thank you, Judge, so my question now is, when you say that Ms. Schultz has been asking for the last year, you've been asking the union to work with you on this, or you've been asking the county?
We started this when Judge Jasperson and Judge Shamley were still here. We were emailing both Thompson and Elona with the job descriptions and stuff prior to. And then obviously, everything happened with Judge Jasperson, so it kind of fell by wayside. And then Judge Vito and I started the emailing process again after he took the bench. And then there's just, it's.
Okay.
Kind of gone away.
Thank you for the clarification. So, we understand.
Yes, so again, if we don't need it, I'm not asking, and we just cut this drastically.
And we certainly appreciate it, thank you, Judge.
Thank you so much, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elisa.
Good luck today in court, thank you for being here.
See what we can do with this.
And Director Goldner, Director Goldner, please, if you can follow up with them and see if they, maybe it's fallen by the wayside, and then we can revisit, they can revisit. Thank you. We're gonna do the same thing that we did with planning. Okay, great. Number seven, please, manager.
Item seven, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four for buildings and grounds.
Uh, it is.
Town of Perump. Which has money.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jimmy Martinez, M-A-R-T-I-N-A-Z. So the request is for three new staff members, two groundskeepers, and one maintenance three. With the increase of buildings going up and buildings age, we are seeing a cost increase in maintenance, so we're trying to keep up with the demands, especially with groups that are coming in. Our sports youth, youth groups are increasing as well, more activities are in the park, everything all around. New, like his Veterans Memorial Building just went up, we're not seeing an increase there, but we will in time, so we're just asking for more staff to be able to accommodate everything that's coming in, so.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Liz, what does that look like? Can you give me a matrix on costs?
Commissioner, I actually would like to see if we can do all the presentations.
Oh.
And I can put the slide at the end.
All the presentations for the Town of Perump.
For, we can do all the Town of Perump, and then if you want to continue with the county, we can do those.
If that would be okay, Chair, I'd prefer to do the Town of Perump separate from, I can, thank you.
That would be great. Thank you, Director, can you tell us, how many grounds, groundskeepers do you have currently?
Right now, I have a. I have eight.
Eight?
Yes.
And do they overlap, do you overlap their schedule, or?
They all run right now from six to three.
Same days?
Same. We have one groundskeeper that runs two, well, we have, most of them run Monday through Friday, and we have a groundskeeper that runs Tuesday through Saturday. And our custodian runs Thursday through Sun, through Monday. So we're on seven days.
If there was an emergency.
Yes, if there's an emergency, somebody will be on, if not, my cell phone is ringing and going out.
You're always on, I see you out there all the time.
Yeah.
And he has buildings that are open too at that time, too.
Correct, so most of our buildings are, as you know, fire stations are open seven days a week, so.
Okay. Did you want to continue, or you're finished?
Whatever questions you have.
It does, it reads two, but he mentioned three.
I think it was actually two and a half, because you had one part-time, correct?
I have a part-time, yes, that runs for our mow season.
Based on what I was reading, it looked like two and a half.
So Jimmy, you submit paperwork for two and ask for three, so we give you two, is that what the deal is here? You're working.
Well, no, it's two groundskeepers and maintenance three, so it's a higher-end position that will be able to do electrical work, repairs on drywall and stuff like that, anything that our groundskeeper can't do, because our ground cleaners are mostly outside, maintenance threes are mostly in the building.
So it's two people with the one upgrade, is that what I'm hearing?
No, three total.
Three total, there is one.
I do see a two.
Yes.
On page two, next to the position.
That's right.
I'm just now seeing it, it's handwritten in.
Okay.
Two of the same type of position, so there's two groundskeepers and one maintenance worker three.
On the next page.
I have two written on my page here, so.
Yeah, I just didn't see it, I need your glasses bad.
Okay, Commissioners Cox or Boskovich, do you have any questions for our director, Jimmy Martinez?
Problem is, we can't approve any of this. We're opening each one of the items up, she wants to make note what the, what the findings are. So we really can't say, oh, yep, let's go approve those three, those three people.
Excuse me, Commissioner Carbone, we did get permission approval by the Chair that we can hear both the Town of Perumps, and then we can see her worker numbers.
And you can give direction to, I'm sorry, Elizabeth Jordan, for the record. Once we see Town of Perumps, all of their presentations, we have one more from Chief Lewis. We can, you can give direction to staff, whether you choose to fund positions or not. And for the final, I would have those included with the final figures.
But there are two action items on the agenda, is what I'm getting at. Okay, so you can't close one and say approved or disapproved.
No, no, so what I'm, what I'm going to do is, what I'm going to do is open the other one up, and if I do happen to close number seven, for example, I'll reopen number seven, and then we'll take seven and eight together.
I don't think, we didn't close seven yet.
We haven't closed it, no. But I did ask if Commissioners Cox and Boskovich had any questions.
Sorry, Chair.
It's okay.
Before, but maybe you didn't hear, maybe you didn't hear me, it's okay, yes. I do want to make a comment, though, we have to be really careful hiring, hiring extra people, because we are growing, we are developing, but the money's not coming in right at this point for the fees that we use to pay them. And I don't want to get anybody in the position where we hire them today and have to lay them off next week. That's, that's harder than them not having a position, because they need to make plans for their future. And we ended up having to do a bunch of very expensive buyouts back when this happened to us before in two thousand and eight and two thousand and ten. So I would, I would rather, if we had to, I know paying overtime is like a no-no, but at least give them one instead of three. You know, have a happy compromise there with any of this, any of the departments. Overtime is too expensive, and doing without is really bad, because then we're overworking the people that we have, and we are going to need some, just don't overhire at this point, wait till the money comes in, maybe six months down the road from all this new housing, and then we could add on that, that time, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you for your insight and looking forward. Commissioner Boskovich, did you have any?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate my earlier comments that these department heads are, and these departments are, are literally, you know, doing their jobs with flying colors, and it's amazing to me that they can do all of this like this. So I, I really, I understand the situation we're in, but I think we need to rethink and reevaluate whether or not now is the time to be, you know, doing any new hiring. I think we should seriously look at a freeze, at least for the time being, and keep in mind that the departments are functioning and doing very well at what they're doing. I get everybody is overworked at this point to a certain extent, and every one of us appreciate all of that, so those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner.
May I comment?
Yes, of course.
I, I just want to remind the public that we're looking at two different entities here. We're looking at Nye County, and we're sitting now as the town board, and we're looking at the Town of Perump for these next two items. And the Town of Perump has an ending fund balance of two point three, or one point two, and they're, so they are going to be ahead a million dollars in their ending fund balance. So we're, they've, they've got money, Nye County doesn't, so thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Carbone?
I'd like to move forward, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, sir, at this time. Let me keep seven open, let's go to number eight as well, please.
Item eight, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four for Perump Valley Fire Rescue.
Good morning, Commissioner Scott Lewis, Fire Chief, L-E-W-I-S. Some great points touched on already, as Jimmy mentioned, fire stations are open twenty-four hours, seven days a week, and sirens have become the soundtrack of our community, so we have great needs. Unfortunately, we're one of those groups that Liz mentioned earlier, that's in, currently in negotiation, so there's a lot of unknown factors right now for us. Do we need staffing? We absolutely do. We don't know what those numbers look like on what we can actually request. So we're at a standstill, and Liz and I have had many discussions over the past several weeks, and we're asking for a play saver on that, once we know what those final hard numbers will be through the negotiating process.
Are you willing to table this item till we have more in six months?
Well, I think that's definitely a course that we have to address, and I think that is prudent, considering the, the content of the conversation this morning. But there's also the overtime issue, and so I'd like to just touch on that briefly, if I may. Overtime is not just a dollar value, overtime is a resource. It's a, it's an actual response methodology on how we are providing those services. Commissioner Boskovich stated that we have open positions. Those positions are driven by the collective bargaining agreement, we simply can't just put a freeze on, and we have to attempt in every way to fill those positions. And with the current considerations on the job market, it's been very difficult to do. We are striving to complete those tasks, though. With the overtime, there's two forms, as we know, there's voluntary overtime and there's mandatory. Whereas, we're experiencing more mandatory, because we're trying to fulfill those requirements and meet our resource request needs, which are commensurate with the community's expectations of the service levels we provide. So, and in doing that, it's a, it's striking a very delicate balance between the two. What we financially can afford and what we need to have in order to complete those assignments on a daily basis. I think one thing that we really need to remember is that our service is not a forty-hour work, work week. We don't work eight hours, our crews work twenty-four hours. So when someone needs either our paternity, maternity, workers' comp, call out sick, annual leave comp, whatever it might be, that is a minimum of twenty-four hours, in most cases, some will only take maybe eight hours in the front. But in general terms, twenty-four hours is what we have to cover in overtime. So we have strove, or strove, no, strove, yeah, thank you. We've endeavored to try and create that balance by creating positions through collective bargaining, such as our rover positions. And that's met with moderate success, but they in turn are also entitled to those same days off. So we are continuously striving to make sure that we maintain the balance, be financially and fiscally responsible, and above all things, we have to be within the balance of the collective bargaining agreement. And so that's where we are today, I'm available for any questions, but please, don't think that staffing, just because we didn't have anything listed on us, it's only because we're unable to complete that task. it's only because we're unable to complete that task. I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, go ahead. No, we appreciate that.
Oh, sorry.
Appreciate that, that's a, we're going to have that with a couple of other folks, too, because we have the same situation in a couple of the collective bargaining groups. So we appreciate your input as well, so, thank you.
Commissioner Boskovich, I believe you want to-
I have a quick-
Yes.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
I have a quick comment, I want to thank the chief for reminding me that my desire for a freeze has, it would exclude police and fire completely, and also any open positions that are already budgeted in this budget, I'm not speaking of those positions as well, I just wanted to clarify and thank the chief for reminding me that.
Thank you, Commissioner, for your clarification as well. Okay, Chief, if you don't mind, I have both number seven and eight open, so now if I can hear from our comptroller, and she can address, and then we may call you and both you and Jimmy back up. Thank you, sir.
Elizabeth's going to help me put the spreadsheet for these two requests, for Town of Prump and for Prump Valley Fire. This is for the Town of Prump only.
Excuse me, Liz, it's okay if she has a brief speaking moment by identifying herself, just push the green button.
Yes.
Button for the green, and state and spell your last name, and then you can slide.
Elizabeth Even, E-V-E-N.
Thank you so much.
And Elizabeth, like I explained earlier, she's been instrumental in helping me complete some of the tasks to get the budget to where it is now.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
If we go to the Town of Prump tab only, this is the request that Jimmy presented for Buildings and Grounds, and also the item for Prump Valley Fire for the overtime. One thing I wanted to point out for the overtime, I've identified the overtime for the Town of Prump General Fund, and the overtime for the ambulance fund as well. They are on the spreadsheet, but of course, from two different sources. And there's the three positions on top for Jimmy, for the Town of Prump Buildings and Grounds. There's the maintenance worker three, and two Buildings and Grounds keepers with the salaries and benefits. And this is the pleasure of the work.
Through the chair, if you added in the numbers that you're asking for, where would it leave us flat demand?
So for the Town of Prump, we have two options, we could reduce the ending fund balance of the, let me get to that page, 1.2 million, or we can reduce the transfer that we do from capital of the 1.5 million dollars, we would reduce that by those positions. But like I said, keep in mind, we do have some anticipated capital projects in the works, so I would-
I would not take care of capital.
Capital.
Leave it alone.
So, but those are the options, but do you want me to plug in all the numbers, all three positions?
Yes.
So 100% for each one of the positions, and 100% for the General Fund Town of Prump.
At least then we can see what the numbers turn into.
Yeah, and we'll leave that there, because this is not the General Fund, the ambulance, those would be, of course, outside of the General Fund. So if I plugged in all three positions and the overtime, give me one second. That would leave the ending fund balance for Town of Prump at 844,000.
Which is six and a half times contingency, if that helps.
That's a good number.
Yeah, it's a great number.
Usually it's 3% or something to that nature.
Yeah, 3% is all we had retained in contingency. I, I can live with this, just saying, and I'm hoping that the other commissioners realize that we are growing our maintenance needs, as we put these out here, it's going to take us months to fulfill these. You actually are going to go out to contract before you know it, long time spent on it, but on Civic Center, that's going to take maintenance. Hopefully, along with that, we will, this commission will find a way to build some ball fields to go with that new community center, Civic Center. So the maintenance is just going to become more and more and more. I think that Chief wants to talk to us, Chair.
I think Jimmy should probably be up here talking about-
Yeah, it's Jimmy's turn.
Yes, please, thank you.
If you don't mind, Chief, thank you, but don't go too far away, we hate to have you get all those steps in.
So, with the numbers, I mean, I would look at maybe dropping our maintenance three and using two groundskeepers, just to kind of help out. Of course, we'll accommodate whatever we get, of course, we will do what we can, and we will just work the guys as much as I can. Try not to anyways, but-
Guys do a pretty good job, no matter what, when we call, you always got somebody coming, so.
No, the guys do a wonderful job, they're always out there, ready to go in response to any time I need to, any day or night. So I know giving them a little help would actually work, make it a little bit easier, especially if they can actually, they will get approved for vacations.
Then you fill in for those sites.
Yeah.
Let me ask you a question, please, Jimmy.
Yes.
The maintenance three, is he the, he or she the position you referred to as far as electrical plumbing, in case something like that goes on?
Yes, they're one of our top guys that we have.
Okay, so, so if we were to go with one, one groundskeeper and one maintenance three, as requested, and forget about the second groundskeeper, would the maintenance three be able to help out and assist with groundskeeping?
Yes, they can, because they will be able to do anything below that, but we try not to, but if in worst-case scenarios, they can.
So CBA says that's okay.
Not sure on the CBA, but that's what we've been doing in the past.
I understand.
Because they are-
You've been lucky, then.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure you, when you say those things, that, you know, we don't get our, we don't get ourselves in trouble as well, because that's a lawsuit to us as well.
Yeah, the way I see it is, our maintenance three can do anything that high, plus below, anything below. They started at a groundskeeper, and they went all the way up to maintenance three, so they know how to handle everything. So we don't like to use them for that, but in a need of time, we end up doing that.
Usually when a CBA says, this is a classification, that's what they can do.
Yeah.
When you work out of that classification, which is something below, it becomes a problem. Am I reading that wrong, Mr. DA? I know what he's going to say.
You need to repeat that.
We have, we have somebody who's classified as a labor grade three, and that's what his classification says he is, he or she is. Can they work below that?
You can always work below, you cannot work up.
Okay, good.
So to prioritize, because you asked for, you asked for two groundskeeper, and forgetting about the maintenance three, but the maintenance three is skilled and important when there's electrical and plumbing and other, other technical issues that happen. So to prioritize, Jimmy, could you reevaluate for us, please?
Yes, I could, I was only going for the maintenance three, because those are two lower positions that would be more cost-effective, but if we do drop a maintenance, I'm not maintenance, but a groundskeeper and add on the maintenance three, it would be a better benefit, because then I'd be able to keep him more, more of our maintenance three guys, they won't be running around with a chicken with a head cut off, they would be actually a little more calmer and be able to control everything and make operationals, make fixes, more adequate. They'll spend a little more time making sure, especially in our fire department buildings, making sure they're up and running, we're not getting a repair running out, and then have to come back and do a little touch-up or something like that, so it would be-
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Evan, if you don't mind, could you put that slide back up on, on screen for us, please, and then-
Modifying the sheet.
Adjust, yes.
So we would keep one of the maintenance workers three and remove one of the groundskeepers, correct?
Correct, thank you.
Almost a million dollars left after the fact, that's good. I like it, what's the chief going to give us? I'm sorry, Chair, I didn't mean-
Thank you, we're, we're working this together, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, I was actually going to ask, so considering Jimmy's generosity and the contingency, is it possible to have a play saver up to three positions, given the outcome of the negotiations, and whether it's financially feasible, based on those numbers, that we could readdress it at a period of time, maybe not to exceed six months? Something along those lines.
Hold on.
Big ask, I know.
Hold on, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Evan, can you pull that, pull that back up? And, well, we show overtime here. We don't see, could Liz-
Correct, so Chief, if he would request a play saver for positions, what we could do is build it into the contingency, and that could be used, that contingency funding could be used for whatever needs of the Town of Prump. It wouldn't necessarily be positions, but it would be a way of having a play saver for funding, if that would need to be brought back.
So the question would be, Chair?
Yes.
Would be is, what, what position levels are we talking about, and whether they're salaries, if you will? So if you wanted to plug something in here for three of those positions, are they same-type positions or are they different?
So we have three different positions, but we would make them line staff, and my suggestion, and just throwing it out there at this point, would be like a firefighter, AEMT, which would be mid-line, so it wouldn't be the expensive firefighter, paramedic, but it would be allow us to get that level of service.
So what would they look like, because we'd have to plug that in there?
I don't have those figures in front of me for those particular class and, or grades and classes, so I would have to come back with numbers from HR for those positions. If you want to table this item for now and come back to it, I'll work with Alona, and we can bring this item back later on in the meeting.
Because that is one of the concerns, Commissioners, that, that would be one of those negotiated items. So what we might tell you now may not be accurate.
And that's our point, I think that we're working our budget with the information we have now, and we'd be more than happy to entertain hearing from each one of the departments at a later date, when we have hard numbers and you have done your negotiations. That's where I would sit, Commissioners.
But if you don't have at least an understanding of what those three positions are, and what they cost, and what that does to the bottom line.
Correct.
So at least we should know.
Correct, so we can, like I said-
You don't have to approve them, because they're not there, but at least we'll know what it's going to cost us in six months, maybe.
So what I would do is, Elizabeth Jordan, again, what I would do is built in those contingencies in that contingency funding. I can bring this back also at the final, so we don't have to address this today, but we can bring it back at the final with those revised figures.
It's just what we need to approve when we go through the agenda items, we want to make sure what we approve. I mean, there's two items there, we have to make a motion and approve something, we need to know what to approve for that particular item, number eight.
And number eight, as it's written, Chief, doesn't ask for the placeholder.
Agreed, we are, obviously, we are handcuffed today because of ongoing-
Well, the sheriff's item is in a few, few more down.
Sure. That's true. Thank you.
So we could continue, number eight?
Yes.
For the placeholder.
We can continue it to the next BOCC meeting.
Yes.
Which is the 16th.
The problem is, he doesn't, he's not going to be done with his negotiations with the union at that time, so he doesn't know. And that's where we're at, we have what we have in front of us.
So how far down the line do we continue this?
I think an understanding of approximately six months would be, I know.
We have to approve our budget for-
No, I realize that, I just-
We're done.
Just in negotiations.
And then we'll talk about this in six months, is what I feel, I mean, we can't do this right now, guys.
I totally agree. The thing is, I just don't have the ability to set up negotiations and bring them to fruition. So, we can keep you posted.
At least we'll know what the numbers are, even though we can't approve them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
This is not going to just happen here, it's going to happen in a couple of other places, I got problems with the clerk's office as well.
Okay, so I do have number seven and number eight open, so let me open this up for public comment. Is there any public comment wishing to speak on number seven, which is, which is Buildings and Grounds, or number eight, Prump Fire? Prump Fire, Valley Fire Rescue. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am, hearing in Prump. Just press the button, green light will come on, thank you.
Victoria Poulsen, P-O-U-L-S-E-N.
Thank you.
I just want to state that I'm just one individual, but I'm sure a lot of people in Prump would say that our first responders should get everything that they need, because that is a priority, especially with an aging population. On a personal level, I've had to use them for me, when I had COVID. So I have a question, well, it's not a question, I hear, so you're kind of hamstringing, you've got to make decisions on a budget, and the date's closing, and you've got a fire chief who's dealing with a union, who can't come to, I guess, an agreement yet on how much they're going to spend. So is there any way with this budget, can you have like an escrow amount? I mean, can you just say an arbitrary number, where you say, we, we can agree to X amount of dollars? You don't have to spend it all, but you can at least approve it, so that when his union or whatever comes to an agreement, and you can hire these people, it's done, because when your budget's closed, now you can't do it, because your budget's closed. I mean, it just seems, I don't know, maybe it's just a very simplistic view, that's all I had to say about that, because, again, I think the first responders need to get what they need, they need it, we need it, that is a priority, that is always a priority, is saving lives. And their lives need to be saved, too, because if they're overworked, overtired, they're going to make mistakes, they're going to get hurt. If they don't have enough first responders to work together, they're going to get hurt. So how about an escrow account, or just an earmark, or something, whatever term you want to use, that's my idea, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Poulsen. Is there anybody on the phone now, please, Sam?
Yes, Chair, the caller is unmuted, please speak and spell your name for the record. Nicole Walters, W-A-L-T-E-R-S. The only thing I would like you guys to consider is, it is cheaper to hire more people than pay a bunch of overtime. Not only the workers that are working would be less stressed, it's better for, you know, the morale of the business or the company. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walters. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay, hearing and seeing no public comment in Prump, Tony Potter, and on the phone, I will close public comment on both number seven and number eight.
I would like to make a motion to approve, as shown on screen. If you can bring that up again, and I'll state it. I could make a motion to approve the Town of Prump Buildings and Grounds for one maintenance worker three and one groundskeeper. I'd like to also approve Prump Valley Fire and Rescue overtime budget, as stated on the matrix.
Second.
Okay.
And that was for number seven, Commissioner, and number eight, okay? And I have a motion and actual two seconds. Okay, and I have a motion and actual two seconds on the floor. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to call for the vote, please.
Strickland, aye.
Kavoni, aye.
Chaburzai.
Boskovich, aye.
Commissioner Cox, did we?
Sorry, my mute was on. My mute was on. I'm sorry, my mute was on. Aye.
Thank you. Numbers seven and number eight pass five zero. I'd like to go to, um.
I just want to say thank you, Commissioners.
Oh. Thank you. Thank you, Director. I'm sorry. I, uh, I wasn't paying attention and I didn't see you at the podium.
You did fine.
I apologize.
You did fine.
I'd like to move to, um, numbers fifteen and sixteen, please.
Item fifteen, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the Nye County Animal Shelter. And item sixteen, for possible action, presentation, discussion, and departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the Risk Management Department.
Commissioner, before, um, these items are presented, I just wanted to point out that the animal shelter is funded sixty percent from the town of Perump and forty percent from general fund, county funds. And the Risk Management Department is funded strictly from the Risk Management Fund, which is 10607. Um, just for your consideration.
Can you tell me the condition of Fund 10607?
We do have a a healthy balance in that fund because a lot of the towns and the counties, uh, complete transfers into that fund. We've had the Risk Management Position vacate for quite a bit of time. Luckily, we now have Jake in that position, so that's, um, we're operating that, uh, department, um, getting it up and going.
Okay, then, uh, did you have more, Liz? I'm sorry.
Um, I don't. And what I would suggest, again, I, for the Nye County General Fund and for the, all the other requests outside of the General Fund, I have put two spreadsheets, uh, separating those, so it, when you get to that point, we can put those up as well.
Okay, thank you. If you don't mind, what I'd like to do is either have, uh, our Assistant County Manager, Dillinger, or our new Risk Manager, uh, Jake Skinner, come up and explain what they actually go through, through risk management in a company. When we have personnel, we have facilities, we have situations, we have we have all kinds of situations that occur. Incidents, accidents, et cetera. It all falls under, uh, health and safety under, uh, Risk Management.
I'll let Jake start this item, and if I need to contribute, I certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Chair, uh, for the record, Jake Skinner, J A K E S K I N N E R. Uh, so when we're talking about risk management, we're talking about our property claims, workman's comp, general liability, safety, all those things that you've already mentioned. And, um, just to give you an idea of the bulk of the workload right now is we have about a hundred and twenty open claims, which date back to 2000. So there's a substantial, uh, amount of workload that is needed to work through this. And, um, while I applaud the move to move to a self-insurance fund, there's still that aspect of replacing, uh, some of the tasks that were completed uh, under the other model. So, um, so I see this as a, as a very good move in terms of building the department so that we have the the necessary capacity to, uh, to look at these items and, uh, and get them under wraps.
Excuse me, Manager. Did you, did you say there's a hundred and twenty open cla- claims from the year 2000?
Yes, Chair, that that's what I said.
Some, uh, again, some of those claims are being worked in two different places, so. So, I mean, this is a lot, a lot that's being done. Okay? Risk management is also a, it's almost like a master plan for how to take care of the things that are possibly could change between now and the future.
Yes, and I, and I'd say, uh, through you, Chair, it's, you know, there's two parts to risk management. There's risk management, and then when that doesn't work out, it turns into claims management. And so I think like with the Risk Management Department, what we want to do is is we want to be preventative. And, uh, so having the claims administrator in place sort of is is just another another person on the team to help us to move forward and prevent future liability problems. So, um, you know, we want to be a proactive department. In order to do that, we need the necessary manpower uh, to get the job done.
Thank you, sir. Lorena, did you want to expound at all, or are you satisfied?
Um, I can expound a little.
Okay.
So right now, a- as we've been, uh, working on building out the Risk Management Department, we had spread the claims across, um, three different employees. That would be, um, Sam Tackett, Ryan Gott, and myself, working those three legs of the claims that Jake just, um, uh, pointed out. There's workers' comp, there's property damage, and then there's our liability, which include our lawsuits. So three different employees were handling those claims administration management that we're hoping to, um, transfer over to the Risk Management Department.
Oh, as much as you can.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
So Risk Management has become a new, um, department for us. Within the last five years, for reasons of becoming self-insured and why else?
Uh, that is, well, n- not only self-funded, but to ho- hopefully mitigate, eliminate risk, obviously not one hundred percent. But we've got a lot of claims where we, we, once we have our policy in place, we can implement corrective action training to hopefully lower our ex- our claims experience.
Because I know the Safety and Workplace Training Officer, Ryan Nelson, goes out and watches employees' work and points out ways to improve the safety on the job site.
Absolutely.
One of those tasks.
Definitely a priority of that department.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners on the line, Boskovich and Cox, did you have any questions for Manager Skinner?
Um, my question would be, how long have we operated with, uh, Roy in that position without, um, Jake? And and nothing, you know, nothing against Jake at all or the position, but we've operated a long time, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, I know that, uh, there's, there are two separate and dedicated positions, Commissioner. I was on on board when, um, when Roy Nelson was hired uh, as the health, or not the health, but the safety officer, um, which is different. I mean, it's under his his purview, under the Risk Management purview. Uh, but he's definitely not the Risk Manager. It's a totally separate position. Uh, but he's been with us for a year and a half now, I believe. Yes.
Right. Ouch. Okay, and then, so this position is, um, up till, up till Jake came on board, we didn't have an actual Risk Manager. It was handled.
Well, we did. It was, it was our Assistant County Manager, Lorena Dillinger.
Oh, there was actually, there was actually a Risk Manager who was hired. That person was here for what, less than six months?
Four months.
Four months.
Yes.
So, yeah. So sometimes, sometimes a specific job might be overstressing and, yes.
And it fell back, and it fell back on on, uh, on Lorena. And Sam Tackett and and Ryan Gott. So this will afford them, of course, this will afford them the opportunity to, um, breathe a little bit and and focus more on on what their actual responsibilities and jobs are.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And and one, uh, one thing I will say, uh, Manager Skinner, is um, a great way to reduce claims is to deny the claim.
We use everything at our disposal.
So, so, so thank you for that. I mean, where where are we gonna go from here with, uh, Mr. Skinner? So it's got a healthy budget.
Does it?
Yes.
May I see it, please?
Chair, can you put it up on the line? We're working as a team here.
So this spreadsheet here shows the Risk Management. Um, of course, that's outside of the General Fund, um, in the request for their, uh, one position.
So.
So their effect, uh, for salaries is fifty-five thousand benefits. Um, and for the total was, would annually would be for fiscal '24, a hundred and four thousand.
How much money is in 10607?
Oh, one second.
That's, that was the actual question.
Sorry, I totally missed that.
It's all right.
One second. For fiscal year, uh, '23, we're estimating to have an ending fund balance on that fund. Give me one more minute here. We're estimated to end the year with one, one million dollars.
I agree with you, Chair, or Commissioner, that is a healthy ending budget.
So I thought it was around nine hundred K. That was a little off.
Only that, I hope.
So I think that's, I think we're pretty safe there.
Nine hundred and sixty-one thousand. Sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, I thought it was around nine hundred K, but, yeah, thank you.
She rounded it off.
Yep.
Have a nice day, Commissioner.
I'll be back.
All right, so. I think we beat that one up pretty bad. Should we talk about the animal shelter?
Well, this is separate, so we can.
No, we opened them both, didn't we?
We opened them both.
Yes.
We can actually close, approve that one if we want to, correct?
We do whatever you want, I'm sure, if the Chair will let you.
I'll have to open it up for public comment. Any public comment on the phone, please, Sam, on number sixteen?
No, Chair.
No. Hearing and seeing no public comment. In Tonopah, Perump, and on the phone for number, number sixteen, I will close public comment.
Chair, I make a motion on item number sixteen to approve the additional headcount for the Risk Management. Claims Administration Administrator, excuse me.
Thank you.
Second, apologies.
I have a motion and a second on the floor for item number sixteen. There's any further discussion from the Commission?
Um, I'd just like to chime in for a minute.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner Cox.
Yes, um, I didn't get to speak earlier, but that's fine. Um, I just wanted to chime in for a minute and say I want to see that department work. I've pushed and pushed for years for self-insurance, and it's finally here. And we need to do whatever we can to keep it balanced and and keep it in place. It will save us so much money in the long run. So I support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Boskovich?
Uh, nothing from me, Chair.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mr. Skinner, before I call for the vote, go ahead.
Yes, uh, through you, Chair, and and just like if it's, uh, I think it's important to bring this point up is on Sunday afternoon, I did receive uh, an email fro- about our our past program in that, um, it would have been about twenty to thirty-five percent more had we stayed the course. So that goes to demonstrate how how good that decision was that you guys made, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will call for the vote, please.
Kavoni, aye.
Strickland, aye.
Boskovich, aye.
Chaburzai.
Cox, aye.
Number sixteen passes five zero. And we still have number fifteen open.
Natasha Crabtree, C R A B T R E E, Animal Shelter Manager for Nye County. And I am requesting several new positions. Um, I hope that you've had a chance to review this. Some of these positions have it's the idea that they would pay for themselves. We would be able to utilize the brand-new clinic that is accompanying the animal shelter. So we are requesting the ability to hire a shelter veterinarian. This would not only serve as a low-cost spay and neuter vaccination resource for the community, but it would also lower our veterinary costs for the shelter. Um, we are also requesting a veterinary assistant that would accompany that veterinarian and allow us to do more procedures and move forward with surgeries. We are requesting a, um, animal services supervisor. This position would not only be a supervisor for the shelters, but also for animal control to help accompany me to not work twenty-four hours a day, every day of the week. We're also requesting, um, a additional office assistant. This position is responsible for greeting the public, processing adoptions, um, and doing all animal control dispatch, as well as any type of telephone, email communication. The only available position that we currently have open is a part-time animal control officer position. We are requesting that that position be upgraded to a full-time position. Reason being, I think that a full-time position is going to be easier to fill, and you're going to have more qualified applicants for a full-time position. We also need that type of coverage. You may or may not be aware that we currently have four full-time animal control officers working in the town of Perump, two of which are out on indefinite leave. Therefore, I only have two operating in the town of Perump. They're doing calls regularly, um, and it does not enable us to actually enforce and oversee and investigate, um, and improve our animal control operations. Thank you.
Total of five, is what we're talking about?
That is correct, Mr. Herr.
And and again, when we talk about the veterinarian services, that should also create some kind of an income, wouldn't it?
Yes, sir. So, um, realistically, the shelter veterinarian position and the veterinary assistant position would be fully funded by an operational clinic.
So that's outside, people would come in and pay for that as well, so that it starts generating revenue that could offset some of this cost at at some point in time.
Correct.
Okay.
I also estimate that this, um, filling these positions, specifically the veterinary, uh, veterinarian position, would take some time. Um, I have history in recruiting veterinarians, and these things can take up to six months to really find the right candidate and somebody who's going to fill our needs.
Being here in Perump is a little rougher than most. Yep. We've, we've had a couple veterinarians over there at the shelter, haven't we?
Yes, yeah, we've been, um, working with veterinarians on a relief basis. Um, they have been able to help us. Um, we've also been, um, utilizing our our partners and keeping our costs low, almost zero, when it comes to our spays and neuters, um, but that's not always feasible, and it does increase the length of stay of the animal in the shelter.
Yep, and not having people working full-time, being off on leave, does not, or not leave, but medical, kind of, kind of hard.
Correct. It does limit our resources. It it does not enable our staff to take their hard-earned vacation time. And, um, there's a lot of overtime.
All right, Ms. Crabtree? All right, Ms. Crabtree, if I may, Commissioner?
Yes, Commissioner.
You have gone and you have seen what we're going through here with our budget, and I do hear that sixty percent is, uh, Town of Perump and forty is Nye County. But this is just blown up, as far as I'm concerned. Why in the world do we need so many people for an animal shelter? And why are we not moving towards what was our original intent, was to have a veterinarian coming in, utilize our, our facility in trade? Not hire a Nye County employee, because there comes with that, all that comes with that. You can end up hiring a veterinarian that also needs to be on leave because of an accident that we continue to pay. Uh, this matrix for me just doesn't work, Commissioners, I'm sorry. I can't, I can't support this, sorry.
I agree with Commissioner Strickland completely.
So, obviously, I understand where, where the manager's coming from, to a degree. It would be nice if we could do contract labor, but that's also a problem. But again, what is your solution? I know you don't, you say you don't agree, so what's your solution?
Um...
Well, I'm, I'm talking to...
Oh, I'm sorry. You were looking at me, and I'm thinking...
Talking to...
Thank you.
He sits over there.
I'm so glad.
Commissioner Boskovich, what's your solution?
My solution is tighten the belts, like all the rest of us have to do.
So what's your suggestion for a veterinarian?
If, if I have a wish list, if I have a wish list budget of five million dollars a year, and I have no possible way to achieve that budget, I need to shrink that budget down.
Again, you didn't answer...
As far as the solution goes, as far as the solution goes, um, I don't think that's in any easier of a question to answer than Jimmy Martinez did when he was up there and reduced his ask from two positions, or three positions, down to two. I think, uh, the same with Director Wagner. He eliminated his ask completely, considering the situation that we were in. And I get that these are all different areas of the budget and things like that, but we're all still in the same predicament.
Right. Again, this is, again, sixty percent of this comes out of a different budget than just the county budget.
Sure.
So again, the, the question is, is what's your solution for a veterinarian? That was my question.
How, how have we done this in the past without a veterinarian? And I, and I can't imagine...
We did, we did have a veterinarian.
I can't imagine of...
Let me, let me, let me, let me educate you.
Sure.
We did have a veterinarian.
Please.
When the county, when the county actually had, you know, the small county shelter, actually, over off of Surrey, we had a vet that came in with, it was a mobile vet, and the mobile vet was there very often to do the activity, not only for the, for the shelter, but for the people. And that's where he got paid.
Right.
So th- there was a vet there to answer that question. Uh, we also, when Desert Haven was there, they, they didn't have a vet, but they had a clinic that they went to, to do a lot of their work. Plus, they went down to, down to Las Vegas to have low-cost spay and neutering, but that costs transportation. So all those costs are all built into that. The question is, is that if you have a veterinarian on site, and again, there's probably another way of getting a veterinarian on site, could be contract labor, but the point is, is will somebody do that? That would reduce costs to the shelter, as well as it would bring in funds to the shelter, because it has outside activity coming in. So that was the reason why she's bringing that up. So, I mean, maybe the solution is only one thing you can do, but not all things just go away. And we're looking at the possibility of trying to bring something to the people here as well, because currently today, to get your dog spayed and neutered without going down to Las Vegas costs you three hundred and fifty dollars plus in some places. So low cost means anywhere between eighty to a hundred and ten, maybe a hundred and fifty dollars. Big difference. So we're talking about something we're bringing to the county and the towns, towns as well. So this is the reason why I'm making, I'm not making an argument, I'm trying to give you an idea.
No, and I appreciate that completely. Um, when I just had our two done, or we just had our two dogs done, it was through a low-cost thing here in Perump, and it was like a hundred and fifty-five bucks, I think. Um, so my other question regarding the shelter is, is the shelter, what's the capacity? What are they running there as far as a percentage of capacity? Because when I was there, it was, it was, I don't even think it was half-full.
So we work very, very hard to keep our capacity as low as possible in order to keep our costs down and keep animals out of the shelter. I'd say that we currently are at about twenty-five percent capacity.
So the whole idea is not, not to keep animals...
It's a very, very nice facility.
Yeah, the idea is not to keep facilities filled. Uh, the idea is that...
Sure.
When you have sick animals, the areas that are identified for those animals get used, animals that are intake, those get used, so the animals move up from one place to the next. That was the whole idea of what that shelter was built for. You know, Mr., you know, Commissioner Kornick was, uh, one who tried to put that together, so we tried to fulfill his request, and there we are.
Yes, and again, it's a beautiful facility, and I'm very happy we have it. I, I, I'm just, uh, you know, I, I don't know if, uh, maybe if, if we could reduce the number of these new positions, just some.
Um, if I may, Commissioners, all right, so how many positions do you have currently?
Within the Perump Animal Shelter, we have five positions.
And that does not include animal control?
Correct. Within animal control, we have five filled positions and one open part-time position.
Okay, so currently, we have more animal control officers that potentially could be out there than we do staff working inside of the animal shelter?
That is correct, Commissioner.
If we, if everybody's going to work, and if we're capable of going to work. All right? And with those five people that you have on staff, they're doing a fantastic job. This facility is always very clean, very presentable. You're including yourself in that, of course.
I am not, plus me.
Okay. So, how many animals is our total capacity for that facility currently?
It depends on how many kennels or cages we have available or accessible. I would estimate somewhere around seventy-five large dogs, um, and then potentially, let's say, thirty cats. We also have the capacity to hold large animals in the back. We do have corral space.
So we have upwards of a hundred animals at any given time that could be in the facility, but right now we have twenty-five?
Correct.
Okay, so we have five people taking care of twenty-five animals right now.
Technically, we only have up to three staff members physically taking care of the animals. Two are responsible for public and animal control dispatch.
Okay, so three are taking care of twenty-five animals, the other two are meeting people and dispatching.
Correct.
I see your needs are met.
And Commissioner, if, if I may, um, within these job requests, there are, there's a lot of wiggle room, um, and there are things that I was willing to take away, and I'm happy to discuss that now, if you'd like.
That's probably where we should have started.
Sure. Um, so, um, we have looked at these and looked at them in, in order of priority. Um, the first that I would completely remove would be eliminating the part-time position of animal control officer, completely. Remove that. Now, of course, that would be a different discussion where we could potentially discuss...
That's currently an open position?
Correct. Um, where we could, in the future, discuss having a temporary position approved, if possible, so that we may have more coverage in the town of Perump right now, since we have two out on leave. Um, next would be the elimination of the office assistant position. If given approval on a veterinary assistant position, that position could cover office assistant when not performing surgeries or animal assist, or, excuse me, veterinary assistant duties. That means that we would be looking at three positions: shelter veterinarian, animal services supervisor, and a veterinary assistant.
So just so everybody understands, there's a lot of things that change, too. Dispatch comes through, through the shelter now. It doesn't come through the, the Sheriff's Department. It all goes directly to the shelter. So that, that, that's a considerable change that happens.
An unfunded, funded mandate to the animal shelter.
Absolutely.
By us.
Is there any other way that you can think of, that we can put a veterinarian there without making it an employee? That's gonna be the question. That's, that seems to be one of the questions. I know what you're saying, because it would be a better, better fit, because now you have somebody that's there on a continuous basis.
And that might be an issue for Natasha. Maybe there is no vet willing to do this on a contracted thing. So I, you know, that, I'm just trying to gain knowledge of the situation. That's why I ask these questions.
No, I understand that. There's no argument.
Um, when we develop these requests, the idea of these three positions, um, please remember that two of them, in a perfect world, will fund themselves, because if we have them on as employees, the shelter veterinarian and the veterinary assistant, they will be covered by the revenue of the clinic. Now, if we contract out with a veterinarian, not only are we not able to oversee that operation, but we're unable to, our community will not benefit from that resource, per se, and we will not be able to operate that as a true community resource. Um, if this shelter veterinarian and this veterinary assistant are working in that capacity, they're going to take on all that revenue. And you, uh, just to note, I'm not sure how, um, familiar everyone is with general operations of veterinary medicine and/or spay and neuter, but I'm not requesting a licensed veterinary technician, which is required to do this. I myself am a licensed veterinary technician. I work as a licensed veterinary techn- technician every day within both of our shelters, and I'm willing to fill that responsibility as well.
Yeah, that was the other thing I had to tou- make sure people understand. We're not just talking to shelter here in town, we're also talking to shelter in Tonopah. So we're actually talking about transportation for those animals to come down to get spayed and neutered, because currently, there is nothing in the Tonopah area, unless they move, they gotta go to a different area, which is further away than here. Uh, there's a, this, it's a, it's a combined process, so it's not just one facilities.
Thank you, Commissioner, for bringing that up. I was waiting for, waiting for my turn, because these five positions that you have listed, Ms. Crabtree, is, they're all in Perump. How many posi-, now, you mentioned you have five positions here in Perump and five animal controls, uh, animal control positions that are filled, one open. Two are on leave. How many do you have in Tonopah, please?
One of those animal control positions is in Tonopah. Uh, we also have a part-time kennel position in Tonopah. Both filled.
So you have two people?
Correct.
Two people in Tonopah, and, and the, the personnel in Tonopah, are they doing the transporting here to Perump?
Uh, yes, it's either, it's either them or one of my staff members or myself.
So that leaves one part-time person behind in the shelter in, in Tonopah. If...
Or, or none.
Or none.
Mm-hmm.
A difficult one. This is difficult.
Well, it is tough. I mean, we would love to be able to offer more services. The reason we built that veterinary clinic was to have a vet in it. Imagine that. The problem is, I think we're going about it wrong. I can't not justify hiring a veterinarian and having PERS, self-funded or not. We have to look at the long-term costs, and the long-term cost is, once we hire someone, we take them on for life.
Well, we can, we have to hire somebody that's, yeah, that ha- goes into the PERS process? Well, yeah, we do, but can they, they don't, don't have to be inside of a collective bargaining unit. They can be at will, right?
I have not seen that great, where it's placed as far as the classification, but it, if it's in, in CEA position, it would be represented. If it, it doesn't fall under the criteria for exempt.
I don't know if we have anything, it's in our CBAs, that talk about a veterinarian.
The CBAs don't get into specifics on, on the positions. That, that would just be the, the, the pay scale that you approve and the position. So you would approve that position placed in whatever grade it has been determined to be in.
Now, something that you mentioned, Ms. Crabtree, is a really interesting concept. We, we're all trying to be creative and drive revenue to Nye County, because we're not in the healthy position we've been in in the past, right? But you mentioned that if, if, um, we were to approve the, um, the veterinarian and the veterinarian assistant, that they would pay for themselves. Not only would they pay for themselves, they would generate extra revenue coming into the clinic, we'll say, through private enterprise, but it's through the county. Is that right?
Yes, Chair, that's correct.
And that would not be construed as interfering with commerce?
Not as far as I'm aware, no.
I'd like to see the matrix that shows how, you know, how a full-time veterinarian, veterinary assistants could, I mean, I can't see it, I'm sorry. And I would like to have a look at a contract for a veterinarian and veterinary assistant. I don't see it working for this community, we're just not that big. Fifty-one thousand people, you know?
Well, if you, if you know how many spay and neuters are happening, you'd be surprised. There's hundreds a day happening. Yes and no. Yes, some will be in hand at a very high, in a very high level, and a very, and some have to be transported to another place to have it happen. So it's, we do have one veterinarian here who's trying to do low-cost spay and neuters, but again, she's one, one avenue, and she's gonna get overloaded very, very soon. Again, questionable things. So can you answer the Chair's question, DA, if there is one to be answered?
I'm not sure I understand the question. There, there's nothing that prohibits you from hiring a vet, even if there's vets in the town. I'm not sure where the concern is. Okay. Well, it, it's okay. I'd like to move on from my question, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
Commissioner Strickland would like to see the matrix. I would like to see more numbers. I think the people would like to see the numbers of what would potentially be generated, because I know here in Perump what it costs to go to a veterinarian. And we're lucky if we can even get in. We all have dogs, we have cats, we have, we have animals, and, um, I think this is a great concept to gather more information on. And so we've been asking to reevaluate, to come back in six months, within six months, to reevaluate, and that'll give you a chance. Not that, not that I want you to wait six months to get us the information, but it'll give us a chance to, and you a chance, to find the, we'll say, perfect candidates, right? I think, and I appreciate, I don't think I know, I appreciate you trying to dwindle down, especially hearing the condition and position we're in. So it would be my suggestion to, to look for an assistant, if that's what you need, an office assistant, to help you in the facility that's also qualified as a veterinarian assistant in the future, if that works.
Chair, I will tell you, I have one of those. They're currently working outside of their means and doing above and beyond for this county and the animals within our shelters.
So are you telling us that you need a pay grade increase for that individual to meet your needs of reclassification?
If, if that is within the window of what, um, you are willing to approve today, then yes, I think that that individual is well worth that and deserves that.
Do we have some idea what the cost might be for a reclassification of the individual that's working in the nu- the other capacity, what did you call it? A, uh, office assistant with a veterinarian assistant capability?
Office assistant, yes.
Do we have a cost for that potentially, staff?
Um, I don't. I, I'm not sure which employee would be, so it would be something that I'd have to work with, um, HR on.
Would you be, be able to provide that after a lunch break, if it were a long enough lunch break? I'm looking at the Chair, see if he's gonna let us do a long lunch break for that.
What we would, uh, what I would recommend is that we continue, because there may be other tasks, and keep in mind, you're not approving the budget...
And keep in mind, you're not approving the budget today. You're gonna give direction to staff, and at the final budget, I can bring back what, all the recommendations or all the requests from the board and have, at that point, those final figures.
So, I know you only want, already, you wanna take public comment, but I think that this is a, a direction that could satisfy our needs for, for the next six months, anyway. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, I would like to open it up for public comment. Please don't go too far away. Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
It's me.
We have, we have, um, Ms. Stringer up in Tonopah for public comment. Go ahead, please.
Yes, Sherri Stringer, S-T-R-I-N-G-E-R. I was just kinda mulling this over, and I don't know if this is something that would be feasible for, to get a veterinary, uh, person here. But what if you went to the schools? You're, I don't know how long it takes you to become a veterinarian, but if you went to the veterinarian school, looked for somebody who is getting ready to graduate or has graduated, offer them a position, say, as an independent contractor, with the capability of, if they stayed with us for four years, that we would pay X amount of dollars towards their college education. That gives you four years to put that money away and sock it away to pay that off. And then you've got your veterinarian, and they, uh, Ms. Crabtree said that they would also receive, uh, or they would make enough funding through the clinic itself. What if you gave an incentive that whatever funding comes through the clinic, the veterinarian gets 25%, and the county gets the other 25%? Or 50%, I'm sorry. That, just my suggestion. I don't know if it would ever work, but it's a suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Stringer. Go ahead, Ms. Clark here in, uh, Perump. Push, push the button for the green light, please.
I'm here.
Okay.
They should have a little arrow. Okay. Personally, Linda Clark, C-L-A-R-K. Personally, I think a vet at the local facility would be wonderful. It is really hard to get into a veterinarian here. It takes months. As far as emergencies, you could go in on a regular day, you had an appointment, it's $45. Emergency is over 100. And if you have to make an appointment, you're lucky if you get in in four or five months. So as far as emergency stuff, it, there are, I guess, emergency clinics. I don't particularly wanna drive into Las Vegas to go for an emergency. My dog might be dead by then. I think we need a vet at this clinic. Whether you need an assistant or not, maybe just another tech is fine, but I, I think a vet would be great here. There are a lot of animals that we know in the past that have been hurt, damaged, and, um, just poor care. I don't believe this facility has that, or will ever have it, but a vet hopefully would keep it from happening. So I would hope so, if they're, you know, legit. So I don't see any problem trying to have a vet here. Yes, it's a little extra expense for us, but for some of us seniors, it would be a godsend to have someplace to go that we knew we could get our animal in and maybe not have to pay it an arm and a leg that we're already paying for everything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Mr. Lilly here in Perump, please, go ahead.
Yes, Dwight Lilly, L-I-L-L-Y. Uh, I'd have one suggestion on the vet. There is a group, and you guys are all familiar, I think it's called Trails End or something. And, well, she has 80 pets that she has, uh, that's what, that's what she says on TV. So it looks like we have 100 in our county-run facility. She has 80, and she spays and neuters all the animals. So she has some way of getting that job done. There's also a pot, pot-belly rescue place over there in Overton, that you could call up and find out what they do. There's a lot of different, um, shelters around that have solved this problem for their shelter that we might, but I, I would have to agree with the one commenter. We probably need a contracted veterinarian of some source, whether it's out of Las Vegas or whatever, because this problem has, seems to be ongoing. We just spent millions of dollars on a shelter, and now we're talking about, we don't have veterinarians. So anyway, I'm sure you'll solve the problem, but there is a solution out there, because other people are solving it. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Williams here in Perump, please.
Helene Williams, W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S. I didn't really intend to speak, but, um, I just had an experience last week and had to take my little puppy to the vet, and I found out a lot of things, surprised me. My vet is open seven days a week. I was shocked, Saturday and Sundays, and they're busy, and you can't get in. Uh, the cost has become amazing. Um, I was shocked with that, uh, so was my pocketbook. Um, but we obviously need more, especially when you drive around and there are dogs everywhere running loose, and these animals are getting hurt with accidents, automobile accidents, all kinds of things. I don't think we have a choice. I do think we need to bring not only a vet, but an assistant vet, and cover as much timeframe as possible. And I think contract's probably the only way to go, because under contract, you're utilizing all the money you're spending, and you're not having this retirement that keeps building and building and building, and that becomes an issue. But thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
No. Ms. Poulsen? Go ahead, Ms. Poulsen here in Perump. I'll, I'll get with you in a moment, sir. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you. Victoria Poulsen, P-O-U-L-S-E-N. Uh, Ms. Stringer hit on such a great idea, probably was a Northern Exposure fan. You know where I'm going with this. UC Davis Veterinary School. Graduates, go grab one or two of them and offer them a great deal to come here and run this clinic as a contract, pay off their student debt. You know, I mean, what, what, what Helene just said, um, I also have dogs, and I was pretty shocked at some of the abominable, uh, veterinary services that were here. I found out the hard way who not to go to. I now have a good vet that I have confidence in, but, um, there aren't enough good ones. And, um, the reason why we're paying so much is because there aren't enough. And so, supply and demand. And if you have a clinic, I have not been to it yet, I'd love to go see it now, I keep hearing about this. So, um, if the town built this clinic, we definitely need to staff it with good vets, and if it will be an, an income generator for the county, then go visit UC Davis and go see if you can hire a couple of graduates. So, and yeah, they may not wanna stay here, then, but they'll get their student debt paid off. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I know that, um, there's a contract that, uh, I'm sorry, NRS, that prohibits us from putting law enforcement, for example, under contract, and I'm not sure, um, if we fall under the same situation with the, with the animal shelter.
Well, the concern I have is, I think, the way this discussion went, is there's a difference between us hiring a vet who's gonna do vet services for people that we have in the shelter. It's far different to suggest that we hire a vet that will now compete, uh, on the open market, um, with veterinarians. Um, and that's where I think you have to be very careful. Um, because again, I understood it was a suggestion to have a vet who will do some of the services for animals that are brought into the shelter that may need veterinary services, uh, but, but again, I, I, it's a whole different ballgame when you start talking about hiring a vet that's actually then the public can come in and utilize those services.
And, and for the record, please, sir.
I'm sorry, District Attorney.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Clerk Kampf?
Thank you. Uh, Mark Kampf, Ni County Clerk, K-A-M-P-F. All I notice is that, uh, there is a cost of liability insurance associated with a veterinarian. I did not see that in the budget in anywhere. So that may be something you may wanna take into consideration, because those insurance costs can be very high. Unless we'd self, self-fund that, but we still need to take into consideration the potential costs we'd incur. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone now, Sam, please?
No, Chair.
No, okay. Hearing and seeing no other public comment on the phone, Tonopah, Perump. I will close public comment.
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
Just, just so we're clear, contracts cost money, too. So, no matter what you do in regards to either a position or a contract, it's gonna be X dollars. So we need to make sure we understand that, and those dollars come out of different places. So, on the, on the person that we were thinking about?
The reclassification?
The reclassification. That has to be split amongst two places, correct?
Right, 60/40.
Correct.
So, uh, Chair, I would like to suggest that we revisit the reclassification and look forward to a matrix from Ms. Crabtree and not approve the, um, items as listed.
Does that need a second?
No. Don't, don't think that's a motion.
Can I form that in a motion?
I don't think it's a motion. I don't think we need to.
That's more of a direction to staff, isn't it?
I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Whoever, you getting ready to make a motion?
No, no, I was gonna second, separate.
Oh, I got it, I see. Just checking.
Okay.
Could I put my two cents in on this one, too? I think you're forgetting I exist because I'm not there. But I am there.
Go, go ahead, Commissioner Cox.
Okay, just to give you a little history and background, you know, when we started this project for the animal shelter, um, I thought we were gonna have a vet write-off, but it's been put off for, God, months now. Um, and yes, we need a vet. Uh, our veterinarian people know their own budget, but they need competition. Uh, it, the people from the outside are saying that it costs a lot of money. Well, I, from what I understand, we're not really getting much in the line of discounts, even though we take them a lot of animals. Um, we built this shelter for the future, so it's very large. It's a lot to maintain. Um, I'm sure the power bills are pretty high, so we need to do something to subsidize the budget that we have for them. Um, and our animals really need a 20-hour, 24-hour availability, 24-hour vet care, because some of them come in so injured that they just will be put to sleep or die, when it maybe it's not necessary if we had somebody that could come in and look at them. And I don't know all the details to working that out. I think it's a very good suggestion to go to the veterinary schools and look for some that, uh, and they get basically a free education out of it, along with everything else. I, anybody that comes in is not going to have to pay rent, utilities, or anything else, and they're going to get a paycheck, which would be less than what they would make out on their own business, but they're not gonna have that responsibility of maintaining a place to go. We do have those facilities. We built them in at the time that we constructed this, so we could do those kind of things to bring in the extra income. And I have to agree with Frank, um, and the same way with, um, Bruce, that they know exactly what we did. So I would like to see veterinary care sooner than later. The rest of it, I don't think really matters, as far as the other positions. I'm not sure about why we need an extra half animal control officer. Is, is that, is that for Tonopah, the reasons of Tonopah? Then yes. For down here, no. Uh, we seem to be able to fulfill, fulfill our needs with two vets, I mean, two animal control officers, majority of the time, because apparently we have two more out that are out majority of the time. So maybe we could even eliminate one of those positions here, um, to help with the veterinary care. Um, we can even take care of, you know, cows and horses at this point. I mean, any kind of animal. We have the facility to do it, and it's just sitting there vacant. We need to fill it, because it does cost us money to be sitting there vacant when we have the larger building and we have to pay a larger amount of fees every month to maintain that building. So I support getting a vet, that's all I can say. Um, where, where we get it from, we'll worry about after we get the permission to have one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, you've given direction to staff. Uh, we will close, uh, number 15, that's right here in front of me. Thank you. And, um, I'll apologize for any inconvenience, but I'm going to call for lunch at this time.
Thank you for your input.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your input. Uh, so be back here at 2:05, please. 2:05, we will, 2:05, we will resume the meeting. Thank you. Welcome back from lunch. It's, uh, 2:06.
Hello?
Is that Commissioner Cox on the line?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Commissioner Boskovich, you on the line?
I'm back with you, fine folks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So all five Commissioners are present, phone and in-person in, in Perump. Number nine, please, manager.
Item nine, for possible action presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the Assessor's Office.
Sherri Stringer, Ni County Assessor, S-T-R-I-N-G-E-R.
Justin Zimmerman, Z-I-M-M-E-R-M-A-N.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, we're here before you today for three data collectors. Um, if you remember, two years ago, we foregave those positions so that we could get more, um, appraisers to handle the workload. And, um, at that time, we asked that we could bring them back at a later date for those positions to be refilled, and we are here asking for those positions. Um, they're vital to the appraiser staff. Um, they can go out and, uh, look at aerials, uh, pick up small items, um, that wouldn't need a, a second person, um, which gives the appraiser more time to focus on putting in reappraisal and new construction. We're looking at, um, needing succession training. Um, I do have some veteran, uh, staff that will be retiring. Um, I have one this year, and then I'll probably have one next year and one the following year. And, uh, we have to definitely get that, uh, training going. This year, we're bringing in, uh, just under 75 million in new construction, um, not including the numerous businesses that will be opening up, um, and receiving a tax bill on July 1st. Uh, it will be sending out the declarations to all the new businesses that have opened up in, in the Perump Valley area, as well as the northern, uh, areas of Ni County. And, um, do you have any questions for me?
I got one for ya. $75 million in new construction, what does that, uh, account for realistically for collections on taxes? What does that pencil out to? Yeah, got you there, didn't I? You brought the 75 million?
Yes, 'cause I have my calculator with me. But if you give me a minute, I'm sure I could figure that out.
I bet you can.
Hang on a second, Justin's gonna pull it up.
Thank you, Sherri. Ms. Stringer?
Mm-hmm. You can call me Sherri, it's okay.
I know.
We've known each other for forty-six years. I think you can call me Sherri.
Yep, only because you got here late. You were four years late, what can I say?
We are looking at two point seven million.
Thank you, Ms. Stringer. Sherri.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioners Boskovich or Cox, do you have any questions for our assessor?
I do not at this time, Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Cox? Commissioner Carbone?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
So, so I'm hearing that, you know, from two commissioners, it seems like the three positions, they feel that they would rather, they would like to have those positions? Trying to understand what no comment means. Again, this is a budget meeting. We got to talk about budget, guys. So does that mean you're in agreement that she should have the three folks or not?
Well, I'm not. I'm sorry. I think.
I've made my position very clear. Sorry, Commissioner Strickland, I apologize.
No, you're perfect. We got this problem. It's called not enough money. And so until I can look at this, as commissioners can look at this in six months, we're up against the same thing we were last time with the downturn. And it's just a scary place to be, and I don't want to overspend what we don't have. And so I'm sorry to say I can't support this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stringer, I have a question, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner, go ahead.
But go ahead and ask, go ahead and ask your question to Commissioner Strickland.
I was going to say, would you consider one position?
Before you answer that, my question, assessor, is how many, you said that you have one retiring this year, another the following year.
That is correct.
And then the third in the third year. How many collectors do you have currently in your department?
I have, are you talking about appraisers? I have four appraisers.
Yes.
I have three in Tonopah that do residential. I have one commercial appraiser in Tonopah, and then I have one in the northern area, and she takes care of everything from Amagosa up north.
That was gonna be my question.
How many data collectors?
I have none. I gave up the data collectors so that we could hire appraisers because we needed appraisers, not data collectors.
Remember that, that was last year.
No, it was two years ago, Commissioner Carbone.
Yeah, two years ago, you're right. They all run together after a while. Was one of the, any of these, would this new person you talked about be up in Tonopah, or is it going to be down here?
No, they would be in Tonopah.
I don't know where to rob Peter to pay Paul.
And I just have a clarification. This is, if I might, Chair, is that okay?
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
So I'm friends with most of these department heads. This is not an easy thing, and it's not anything personal against anybody, but fiscal responsibility is where we need to be. And I don't give a damn how we have to get there, that's what we need to do. Other than.
And I understand that, Commissioner, but the problem is, is successor training. We have to have the training. These people just can't come in off of the street. They have to be licensed through the state of Nevada Department of Taxation. It's not, I could just walk in and hand somebody an appraisal job. I can't do that. They have to be trained and they have to be trained properly.
Completely, I understand that, and Commissioner Strickland just hit it on the head. Where do you rob Peter to pay Paul? And you collectively as us, everyone in this county.
I understand that completely. But if I don't have the staff, I can't pick up the work. And that affects your budget.
So, Chair?
Yes, Commissioner.
Have something you want to say?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Knowing that she's going to be losing a person within the year, it would make almost sense to look at maybe one person to fulfill, knowing we're going to be losing a person within the year. When did you say this person's retiring, assessor?
In September.
Yes.
It'll take you that long to fill a position if you start now?
Yes.
But then we can't replace the position that is being retired out. That's your question?
Yeah, I know we're trying to figure out how to, you know, help that situation so as you can get the training.
Right.
So.
Is that doable for the assessor, bringing in a data collector position, but then not refilling the retired position when that person retires out?
No, because that person is an appraiser.
Different position.
That's why she's looking for an appraiser.
So, Ms. Stringer, under your justification, you do write, as everybody else has, is that you incur overtime throughout the year?
No, sir. We will incur overtime within the year. We don't, I very, I don't, you can ask Liz, I don't believe that there's been much overtime out of my department, if any.
So with that being said, can we hear a number, a guesstimate, Liz, of the one position that assessor requested for us to consider versus the overtime that will be incurred?
Can we throw the chart up?
Yes, one second.
Thank you.
As Ms. Stringer said, she does not incur overtime throughout the year, so I don't have those figures for her overtime. She, that department does incur overtime when the holiday, because of four-ten schedule that they have, that does happen within her department. But aside from that, those holiday days, depending on where they land in the year, the assessors, you can see there for the data collector, you have the estimated salaries of about thirty-nine thousand to seventy, benefits of forty-two, four-seventy-seven, and the total for one position would be eighty-one thousand, seven forty-seven.
That's what the new increases.
Blows my mind that our benefits are exceeding our salaries. Wow.
Well, same thing with us. So if we were to put a, and it's a data collector, one data collector in there, or do you want that to be an appraiser?
Say that again, Commissioner Carbone?
You want an appraiser, or do you want a data collector? The person you say you want.
Is a data collector.
Okay. So we add a data collector in there, one?
I'm sorry, data collector is what we have there on the request.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah.
But I was asking if she wanted to upgrade it to something else.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Here's why I asked the question. Thank you.
Can I ask something even sillier? Since our estimated benefits exceed our salaries, is it possible to make a data collector part-time so that doesn't happen? We maybe all afford two data collectors for the price of one, given the benefits, if they were part-time? Yeah, you may not have heard that. The DA was like, good luck hiring them.
So what we've asked, what we've asked is to reevaluate within six months. She doesn't, she doesn't have six months if one of her employees is retiring in September.
Chair, can we ask Alona to start front-loading that employee now for hire, the retiree? Is there a way to do that? There'd be some cross-training then, imagine that, a cross-training.
Can I give you just?
Excuse me, Ms. Stringer, are your employees in any collective bargaining unit?
Yes.
Would that prohibit, the CBA, would that prohibit any of them from getting cross-trained?
I don't believe so.
No.
No, not a data collector. But can I tell you how this is kind of going to work so you understand? Okay. So the person that is retiring is an appraiser. I have someone who just became, and they're a property appraiser, because there's two different types of appraisers in my office. There's property appraiser and personal property appraiser. So the appraiser that is retiring, I just had my personal property appraiser has now received her certification to be a real property appraiser. So the idea is to take her and train her to become the appraiser. Okay, so then that means that I'll have a personal property position open, and we'll fill that. So that's kind of how that's going to work there. So the data collectors are for the Tonopah area just because we keep adding subdivision on top of subdivision. They have to go out and pick up these houses and land values and, you know, pools and sheds and anything else you can possibly think of to put on your property. So that's where the data collector comes in and helps out the appraiser. So if I can get one, I can have that person help all three of them to a certain degree.
But then again.
But eventually, I would like to have one for each appraiser.
But then again, with our unforeseen income giving, are we going to have things to appraise? Is there going to be continued growth, or are we going to start feeling the crunch of that not happening? That's.
That's a good question, and I think we approached that a little earlier, that we know that with the increase of, you know, another quarter percent on interest rates, it's going to slow some things down. But from what I'm hearing, if this two point two million that she's talking about is realized, that'll be, you know, pretty good. Yeah, so. But again, I mean, I'm trying to figure, we should be trying to figure out how we can make things work, knowing we're going to be, a person's leaving and a person's coming in. It would be nice to be able to make that happen.
There should be, there should be a plan like that already in place for the county, which is a shame we don't, because we've spent so much time doing exactly what we're doing right now, having basically hiring freezes that keeps people from being hired for the first ninety days of a position being vacated, and then we're constantly behind because of our, we're not a very rich county, there's no doubt, we're a poor county.
And those are putting, that process was put in place on purpose for the issues we had in 2014, 15, and 16, so.
So I'm still in the same place I was before, six months.
Well, well, wait. Okay, if I may, Commissioner, if I may. So she has, she has an employee retiring in September. Once that employee, if we said no, we just can't give you what we don't have, September rolls around, she's going to then start to look to replace that employee anyway, right? So it's going to take, it's going to take, I mean, a data collector full-time, it's going to take a special person to want to do that, right? And it may take three, four, five months to find the right candidate. And I'm not speaking for HR, but our experience throughout the county to try to find great candidates that want to work for the county and want to be out in the field, et cetera, it's not easy. It's not easy anywhere. So I'd just like you to consider that with, I get the six months, but she doesn't have the six months under her situation.
Okay, so that being said, if we went out now to hire a personal property appraiser, because the personal property appraiser is going to become an appraiser, there's no data collector thing here. So we either start hiring now for the position that's going to be vacated because the personal property appraiser is going to become a property appraiser, and that's in fact her need immediately for the retiree. It's not a data collector for the retiree. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. And Liz, if you don't mind, Comptroller, could you give us the difference between the salary between the appraiser and the data collector, please?
I would need to get those numbers from HR for those, so we want to come back to this item, I can't.
Yes. Okay.
I'm more confused now.
Are you?
Yeah, because this is data collector. I think she's talking about data collector.
Yes.
So I heard appraiser. Now I'm confused. What are we, are we trying to upgrade somebody or what?
No, what I heard in, what I heard in the conversation, in September, if, okay, if we had stayed this for six months because we don't know where we're going.
Right.
Budget is wiped out.
Right.
If we stay this for six months, by then, the chair has pointed out that we'll have a vacated position that needs to be replaced because the property appraiser has retired, the personal property appraiser has become a property appraiser, and in fact, the new hire should be a personal property appraiser so that, and forget the data. And we should be working on that now, is what his point is, instead of waiting six months.
Right, because I'm going back to when I said that same thing, and I don't think anybody caught that. But again, it's okay.
No, I love to repeat what you say in a different way and make myself look smart.
Okay, okay, great.
It's my job, okay, that's what I do.
So I'm trying to figure out to see, you know, where we're going. Come on.
Did you say that?
I'm confused. I just want to make sure I'm hearing the same thing here.
I have no idea.
Bye.
Yes. Yes, I do. Ms. Stringer, Mr. Zimmerman, if you don't mind, let me open it up for public comment at this time. Thank you. Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Clark here in Tonopah, go ahead, please.
Linda Clark, C.L.I.R.K. I just want to know who's on first. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gina Meredith, M.E.R.E.D.I.T.H. Can someone answer this question? How many appraisals do they do a year?
Thank you.
Our office handles roughly fifteen to eighteen thousand appraisals a year.
Wow.
Fifteen to eighteen thousand?
Yeah, there are more than sixty thousand parcels in Nye County right now, and they're split into five reappraisal districts. So each parcel is completely reappraised once every five years.
And are these like desktop appraisals, or these aren't like physical out in the field?
These are physical appraisals. We do, we collect aerials, aerial photography, and moving, well, permits, construction permits for the Tonopah Valley, but permits are not issued anywhere outside of Tonopah. And even with the aerials and the permits, yes, the appraisers, and if there was a data collector, this appraisal team would go into the field and collect physical data as well.
Thank you for that.
Do you have anybody else on the phone, please, Sam?
No Chair.
No, okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment on the phone, Tonopah and Tonopah, I will close public comment at this time. Your appraisers are quite active, very active.
Yes, sir.
Five of them, five districts. You have it separated into district? Is it the same district as the commission? No.
No.
So it's more evenly spread out as far as your parcels?
Kind of.
Kind of, sort of?
Yeah. I mean, you know, depending on which. I mean, you know, depending on which district you're in, you know, one appraiser might have 1,600 parcels that she has to appraise in that reappraisal time.
Yes.
So, they, you know, you can go from 900 to 2,000, it just depends on which district we're in.
And you're dealing with different things. One might be heavily residential while one is heavily vacant land. But, yeah, the goal is for them to be as close as possible.
Kettle, it could be anything.
Well, and you have to check every parcel because people will just put up a fence or they'll drill a well or they'll put a shed up. So, it's, you know, you have to check every parcel.
Yes. Yes, Commissioner.
So, what was your, what was your conclusion assessor that you really wanted us to do?
I really would like three data collectors, but if I cannot get three, I would be happy to start with one. And then maybe ask next year for another one.
So, you're not asking anybody for a replacement for any other activity at this time?
Not at this time.
But in September, she will.
I was gonna, do you mind?
No, go ahead.
If I may, it sounded like there was discussion on the board, though. We're asking for one data collector at this point. Maybe there was some discussion around giving us a personal property appraiser instead. And if that's where you're leaning, we'll take that.
To me, that would be the more efficient way of doing business, knowing that you have a person retiring in September. So, you get that training that you were talking about.
Hey, we don't get to have conversations without being heard, that's not fair, you guys are doing it.
Sorry.
We were discussing the data collector versus personal property appraiser.
Mm-hmm.
And the outcome of that discussion was?
Personal property appraiser. If you're offering it, I'll gladly take it.
Well, before it's offered, that's why I asked for the difference. I wanted to know the difference, so we had an idea of what we're looking at, so, so...
So, we have to come back?
Yeah, if you don't mind, um, between the Comptroller and HR, they're going to try to get those numbers for us so we can move forward with this, or not.
We'll be here all day.
If, not to hold you up.
Can we add one?
Yes, go ahead.
Can we add one small thing to, I'm sorry, this isn't in, this isn't in our backup, but we did talk about this with finance, um, two, at least a year ago, possibly two years ago. But our deputy assessors are grade seven, whereas the deputy recorders, clerks, treasurers are grade eight. We would like to see those leveled out as well.
So, are you canceling out the idea of the appraiser and data collector? No, no, hang on a second.
Nope, nope.
Hang on a second, just, that's exactly what I was gonna say. We did an evaluation on all these positions, so... Manager?
That hasn't been done, the project was approved, but they will be done.
Okay.
Let us do that first, right?
Yes, I think that'd be wise.
Once we have our data, we can make a decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you, let me, let me close number nine at this time. And when I'm given the high sign, I'll call you back up, I'll have it reopened if you don't mind. Thank you.
Looks like we might be here to take naps at seven?
No, why not?
Number 10, please.
Number 10, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the Clerk's Office.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Clerk, Com.
Yes, my understanding is that this budget is not complete.
That is exactly my understanding as well, due to the fact that we have outstanding issues with the courts. And I guess we'll have to come back to this at some point in time.
If you wanna discuss the specific items that I had listed as asks for the clerk, I can explain them to you, and we can go through that at least.
Is that more of just upgrades?
Uh, no, these are some basic things that we need to address.
Great.
Okay. Uh, as you can see on the, you have the numbers up for them?
Yes, um, we can put those up for the Clerk's Office, the general fund section.
In 2012, a contract was approved for the Clerk's Office to scan and document some of the case files that were under their responsibility. I put this in here because I believe that the county's at risk with some of our historic documents and that they need to be scanned and properly documented. Uh, my concern is not only just with the way that they are, the fact that they are not being scanned and preserved, but also the way they're stored, and this is just a starting number to deal with that issue. I believe that the, some of our historical records are at risk because the vaults do not have the proper fire suppression, and we have lots of documents that, in the Clerk's Office, that have not been properly scanned for, uh, public consumption.
May I, Clerk?
Yes.
Staff? We have L-A-T-C-F funds that are coming in the tune of $12 million. We've gotten $6 million of it so far. Is this an appropriate use for those funds outside of this budget item?
So, we will bring the last funds, um, the details of it, but yes, um, to answer your question, the last funds are, um, able to be utilized for government, um, general government expenses as well as capital, um, which this obviously would fall into either one of those categories.
Clerk, I'd appreciate it if you would bring this back to us so we can dedicate those funds at that time for that use, please.
Very good, I will do that, thank you.
Did you have something you wanted to offer about this $100,000? Is this something else gonna be taking place on this equipment? Or it's something we know we have to go out and purchase? Or is it just we have to?
This would be a, more of a process and a contract to get someone who can scan this information and catalog it properly. You know, we need to look at a lot of the things that we have scanned because they may have been scanned, but they're not properly cataloged so they can be found. You know, in my dream world, I'd love to see a situation where the average citizen can do their own records search rather than coming to the county, so that ideally, we'd wanna be able to grow as a county and not incur additional staff costs for these types of requests.
This makes sense, I just wanted to make sure that guy said.
As far as travel, um, in the prior year's budget, uh, it was clear at the time the budget was done that none of the candidates for clerk were from the Tonopah Office. However, there was no acknowledgement of the fact that there had to be some travel, particularly considering the fact that most of the clerk's work is done with the Tonopah Office. And, uh, as you may or may not be aware, in the future, none of the Perump work, except for marriage licenses and other things, will be, uh, under that area of responsibility. Uh, so, um, you know, my concern, now, we can start to move some of those functions ultimately down to Perump, but that's not in the near term whatsoever. In the first five months, we incurred $7,800 of travel costs and against a full-year budget of $3,851. If you annualize that, it works out to be about 18,643, uh, you know, for the annualized effect of that. Uh, and I have a lot of travel that I need to do to Tonopah, particularly a lot more now that we will have three elections in, uh, 2024, the presidential preference primary, the primary election, which now doubles the number of elections we're having in this fiscal year. In the calendar year, we will have three elections, including the general. So, I don't see that that travel is going to be reduced whatsoever. Matter of fact, I see it as being more because I need to spend more time there than I didn't when we were doing a hand count. It kept me in Perump more than I should have during the election process. So, that's...
That would fall under service and supplies, those particular asks. And so, thank you.
Uh, as far as training, again, this is something that is at your discretion, but the Clerk's Office hasn't had training for anything for a long, long time. And, uh, I would like to increase their skills in Microsoft Office functions, in election management, those sorts of issues, so that we never run into a situation where, uh, we need to have the Clerk's Office step up and they cannot operate fully functional. Uh, this is again, something that can be delayed if you choose. Uh, I'm putting it on there to acknowledge the fact that they have not had training for quite a while.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on there is $10,000 for election workers. The presidential preference primary will be fully funded by the state, but they're not gonna fund the cost of us doing the work. And as with any election, we have to hire poll workers to do the work. And so, they're either poll workers or overtime for somebody, and it's gonna be, uh, we're gonna need poll workers for that election process that we do not have right now. So, I mean, it's, we're gonna incur it, uh, so it's just a matter of acknowledging it in the budget. And actually, this is a little bit less than I think we should have, but I believe that we won't be doing paper ballots in the future. Uh, in these elections, the Assembly is gonna pass, um, the bill that outlawes paper ballots. So, I'm fully prepared to go to the Dominion voting machine process for our in-person work. But still, you still have, uh, a lot of the mail ballots coming in, and all that stuff has to be dealt with. The last item on there is, um, we, uh, as you're aware, we need to provide translation services at the polls for poll workers and, uh, it, for the people at the polls in Duckwater and in Shoshone, I mean, in Yamba, Yamba tribes. And, uh, although we were able to fortunately get lucky and have someone to attend and help us with that, I have been approached by the Native American Rights Fund and asking about how we are providing additional support to voters so that they can understand how to read the ballot, understand how to vote in the Shoshone language. And I think it behooves us to anticipate that. The legislature is moving in that direction, is gonna force us to do it. But we are pretty much in the spotlight because we are the one county in the state that is required to provide that type of language support. And I think we need to do some voting videos and some PSAs so that we can provide those to those citizens and help them understand the ballot and the ballot issues. Those are very complicated issues for them to understand.
Thank you, Mr. Com. Commissioners Boskovich or Cox, do you have any questions for the clerk?
No, I don't.
I have no questions for the clerk.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Just because they can, they will, and we get the blunt of it, so, there you go. Thank you, Clerk, we appreciate what you've done.
Okay, and I do really believe that the issue of the budget is a serious issue that needs to be dealt with. It's all started on August 3rd of 2021, and it's not a very pleasant environment right now. Thank you.
We see all those new requirements, we understand it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Com. Sure, I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Hearing and seeing no public comment on the phone, Tonopah and Perump, I will close public comment.
Chair?
Yes?
Just a question, you've already closed public comment. When do you think we'd be able to get back to this particular one? I'm hoping maybe before the 16th of May, is that possible? I, again, we have to come up with a formal budget for June, so we need to know what we can or can't do.
If you're talking to me as the clerk, okay, well, I've been excluded from any of those conversations.
No, but the DA knows who I was talking to. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I think, um, I'll definitely reach out to see if we can get the discussions going. The last couple of weeks have been a little hectic with the murder trial going on, but we definitely wanna tackle that, so I will certainly try to get something finalized.
I appreciate that, 'cause we definitely need to understand where we're going. I appreciate that.
And our final budget's on May 31st, we think, so.
Hopefully.
Some retrieve there.
But that means we have to have something done by the 16th.
Good point.
Okay, thank you. Are you ready, Mr. DA? Number 11, please.
I am 11, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the District Attorney's Office.
I think I'll start with I need three additional prosecutors.
That's the way to go, and then tone it down, start with eight. If it's one, we'll be happy.
No, actually, uh, I, I think I'm in good shape as far as numbers go. What I did wanna report is that, um, basically, I've had to do some major reshuffling in my office. It was kind of interesting when I was preparing to come into office that I had 40% of my attorneys were chiefs.
Or is he Indians?
Yeah, that was my concern. But so I've done, I've done some reshuffling, have moved, moved some parts around. And I still have a couple of more moves that I wanna do. They're going to be budget-neutral, so I don't want there to be any, when you see these things happen, you know, panic about, you know, adding new positions, they're not. I'm just trying to reposition some of the positions I have. One of my major priorities, which is a, been a major, I think, shortcoming in the office, is I want to have a true victim advocate. And then I would also like to change one of the secretarial positions, 'cause I still have one other position in my office that I can move around. So, again, this is gonna be budget-neutral. But I really do need that victim advocate and then have the secretarial support that would go along with that advocate. So, that's, like I said, it's something I desperately need, and it's, you know, it's a, it's a service, I think, that's badly needed. I think, you know, particularly, you know, going through, you know, the trial that we've just gone through. I don't know if you've seen any of the Vegas press, um, you know, complaining about us and, uh, how Clark County has advocates, but, you know, we don't have out here. But it's just one of the things that goes on. But, uh, but anyway, that is, that is something that I do wanna do. And like I said, it'll be just a question of moving, uh, positions around in order to accomplish that, because like I said, it, um, I've already, even the moves I've made, I was able to, um, actually bring in, um, you know, the staff I needed by changing the structure. I, you know, I don't need four chiefs in my office. And so, I was able to do that and be able to bring in the attorneys that I have, that I do have. So, again, you'll, I don't know if we'll necessarily need to come to the Commission on this, but that is something that I'm, I'm working with, um, admin, to kinda move around some of the pieces in my office to, to have these things done. The other thing that, um, the one benefit of having the victim advocate and the clerical supporter, are those, those are two positions that we are actually in the process of trying to get at least partial funds, grant funds, that'll reimburse us for those expenses. So, that's, uh, that's the one, that's the one area that is, there aren't a lot of grants in that particular arena. And so, we are in the process of working with Attorney General's Office and putting in for those grants, so that will actually provide us, um, some budget savings from the standpoint of being able to get reimbursement. I'm not sure, I'm not, I'm not promising it'll be 100% reimbursement, but whatever we can get, obviously, is a big help. So, um, you know, we're going there. The one budget hit, um... The one budget hit that I do need to address is our, and we had, we talked about this during the budget discussions. We just didn't have any numbers, but our data system is no longer in existence. What we're using is not supportable. So if it crashes, we lose everything. So everything is stored electronically. It's a very antiquated system. Again, the, it is JustWare's, the company we were using, and they, they are no longer operational, so they're not supporting it. We've had a outside company that's been kind of helping us support what we're doing. The problem with it is it's not very useful either. It's such a data hog that the attorneys can't even access the files when they're in court. It just takes up, takes up too much air bandwidth to, to, to go through it. So we have been working with, looking into a couple of other companies. And, you know, we've got, we've gotten to the one where we've really feel like this is the one we need to go with, which will give us an amazing, it's hard to describe. It's just the ease of accessing cases, the information we have, the way it tracks. It automatically sends out notices to victims and witnesses. So there's, there's a lot.
I feel like it's a candidate for that grant funding, that LATCF again.
Yeah, we might be able to with that, but, but it's, it's a great, it's a great program. It will, the, the annual cost is really only about $12,000 more than what we had been paying for, for JustWare annually. The problem is we've been paying a lot less than that this past couple of years because JustWare hasn't been supporting it. But, but like I say, it's about a, about a $12,000 annual increase. Then the other issue we have is it's going to cost us $59,000 in order to implement it. And so that, you know, that we'll have that upfront cost of $59,000 that I certainly am asking that we find a spot for it in the budget. And this is one of those things where the benefit of this in particular is the ease in which we can now generate our documents, complaints and things of that nature. It's very, very user friendly. And the good thing about it, it's actually in a shared, basically, you know, in the eye in the sky.
I was just going to ask you the questions.
Yeah.
So everybody knows it's not just one, you just using it.
Yeah. And so it's, it's one of those programs. And again, because of that, it's not a data intensive program. You know, you can, you can access it from anywhere, just logging in and you have instant access to all of our files, you know, instantaneously. And again, it's not, you're not downloading all that data every time you're trying to get data off of it. So there's so many advantages to it. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that out there that, that is the, probably the big budget item that I need addressed is the, the funds to be able to implement this program.
Thank you, Mr. D. I have a couple of questions, please, sir. So, so I understand, so you eliminated some positions? And basically, basically you've navigated through where it's going to be budget neutral. So you do, you'll have to get with, with HR and admin to, to work that out. It's really semantics at this point. And, and is that right?
Yes.
Yeah. My other question is, do you receive grants for any other position in your department if you wanted to hire somebody?
Not currently.
No. So these two positions that you're requesting, you're hopeful, confident that, I mean, you have the opportunity to apply for these grants? And have you been with, will you be doing that in-house? Will you be asking for assistance through the, our grants administrator, through Stephanie Elliott?
We have had discussions and a lot of this is through the Attorney General's Office. And we have had grants, these types of grants. Some of them are called stop grants, some of them are VALA. And these are very plentiful ads, or grants. And, you know, we had some problems because we, we lost the grants previously because it wasn't being administered appropriately.
We, as in Nye County?
Nye County, yes, yes.
I see.
We, we've had positions funded with this grant, but we, we lost those. But now they are working with us. We've been working very hard with the Attorney General's Office because they're, they're kind of the state manager of this grant. And so again, we're, we're doing everything we can to work with them to get the grants back. And like I said, we're doing it in a different way. Because before, previously, what they were doing was they were, they funded one of the attorney positions. And now with me wanting to switch those grants, and they're very excited about us, you know, using a victim advocate and getting the grant funds for that, that also working closely with Kathy McKinnon over at Nevada Outreach. Because again, we work very closely, because a lot of these, you know, this position is going to work closely with our advocates, you know, with our, our, the work we do with the sexual abuse investigations and things of that nature. So these all dovetail in together, which makes it really a strong grant application.
But of course, you're referring to previous administration.
Yes.
Years ago.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Elliott.
Just wanted to give my two cents, Stephanie Elliott, for the record. In some of these grants that we've had in the past, they don't cover 100% of the position. So in the prior couple of years, we've tried to fund a deputy district attorney position. And the most recent grant, one of the highest that we've seen at $60,000, was just under half of the actual total compensation. So while yes, there may be some grant funding to help support the office, it will not be 100%. And they always look for a match. Right now, I think we're supporting maybe three or four different associates that are handling some of those victims' cases. So we're able to, you know, help alleviate some of the fund because we are missing that position, but it's not 100% funded.
Yeah, and some of us knew that because we've seen this before. I mean, there's, there's things that we see all the time. And the same thing, same thing in the Sheriff's Department, all the grants aren't 100%, so. We understand.
I will say that, you know, the maneuvering I did before actually saved $17,000 from my budget.
Yeah, I remember.
So I was able to really move the positions where I needed to effectively. And like I said, we, we really, I was able to save $17,000 out of, out of my budget. There is one position that I am eliminating to fund, you know, some of this. And then I, there's, there's another position I'm, I'm going to move around. So I don't need it where I need it. I'm going to move it over to where I need it.
I guess when you figure out what your funding is based on these grants, you let us know what the requirements are going to be.
And the thing is, well, you know, I'll need the positions before we actually get the grants. It's just that, once I get the grants, it'll be a reimbursement grant.
Well, which is normal. You have to have everything upfront to get reimbursed. So we need to make sure that you're very well aware what those numbers are.
Thank you. Commissioners Boskovich? Yes, go ahead. I knew that, see?
Yep, yes, sir. I just wanted to thank District Attorney Cooney for being so responsible with the budget he's got there. I think that's very, very cool that he can proactively move things around how he needs to and to accomplish what he needs. Secondly, I will also say that a victim's advocate is a very, very much needed position and is a huge service to people in need. So I've had experience with them and they are very, very helpful. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cox?
Oh, hi, sorry, I was on mute again. I don't believe I have anything right now. I think he's doing the best he can with what he has and just keep moving forward.
Yes, thank you. I was, he mentioned $17,000 savings. I would have been really impressed if it was 18. But he said he'll work on it. Thank you, Commissioners.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me open this up for public comment at this time. Do we have anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No chair.
No. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Prup, oh. Ms. Paulsen, please. I do see someone here in Prup. That's okay.
Victoria Paulsen, P-O-U-L-S-E-N, in regards to the victim's advocate. Having seen this position being filled in other jurisdictions, this would be somebody who would be a, probably a licensed clinical social worker, is my guess, right? Somebody with some experience handling mental crisis, emotional crisis as well? Oh, that's, I'm posing that as a question that you can't answer, right? So I'm just going to throw that out there, that this person ideally would be very well trained in dealing with emotional crisis. So you're talking about a highly credentialed individual, not just someone who wants to help. So just want to put that out. Thank you. That's what I would want to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Who's thinking about hiring Mr. Gibor?
I can do more than help. Is there anybody else on the phone?
He's multi-talented.
No chair.
No, thank you, okay. Hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah, Prup, and on the phone, I will close public comment.
I don't see any reason to take any action at this time.
No action?
The only action would be is him getting his grants and us finding out what the matches are.
That's great.
Giving it a name.
They would be back in here.
Okay, we'll, we'll see you soon.
To be approved.
Number 12, please.
Sooner than I would like.
Next Tuesday.
Item 12, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the sheriff's office.
Hello, Lord. Captain Harry Means, M-E-A-N-S. Sheriff McGill couldn't be here today. He is under subpoena right now for a case in justice court, so he sent me to represent us. Apologize for that.
Thank you.
All right, so never done this before, so I'm going to just go off everyone else's lead and go line by line, I guess. Our first position, our first thing we're asking for is an administrative tech. This would be for the Prump office. We previously had three techs in Prump. Last year, or yeah, last year Sheriff Worley moved one of those techs to Beatty to open that office up. And with that move, it's created a vacancy in Prump that we have two people doing the work of roughly three people. So we are attempting to get a position back while not closing down the Beatty substation, having a person available to the community there. The next item is overtime. We average roughly $400,000 a year in overtime. In recent years, our budget doesn't include that line item. And so each year we come to the Commissioners and you augment our budget at the end of the year. We're just asking for that line item upfront. We can track it better and make sure we're managing our money that you provide us. And lastly, this doesn't have a money amount onto it. It's just an issue we are dealing with right now, which is recruiting and retention. We have, as you, if you follow national news, this issue's across the board, across the United States. We are particularly hit hard in Nye County as we're not competitive with not just Southern Nevada or Class III counties. We're not competitive with the whole state. And in recent weeks, we're losing one to three people a week. We are down approximately 30 positions at the sheriff's office and we only predict it to get worse if we do not become competitive as a county when it comes to compensation for our employees. So we understand we can't do anything about that now. We are just bringing it to you that it's going to need to be a group effort to solve this problem because we're just concerned about what our future looks like as a county providing law enforcement services when we don't have personnel.
Okay, let me ask you a question, please, Captain. With this hiring incentive, the concept, is it an immediate check that's issued to a new hire? Is there a timeframe that they, that they are required to work for you, for the department?
So ideally, it would be a timeframe. We were discussing it this morning. We're not sure if a hiring incentive is the right route to go because another issue we have is just retention. And so we, realistically, we were discussing in the morning that it needs to be a global approach just to make sure. Because if we say there's a two-year timeframe on it, at two years and one day, we've seen people leave.
They will depart.
The issue with it is we start out at $21.77 an hour and at two years on, you can go to any of the agencies in Las Vegas and make anywhere from $28 to $34 an hour. And so Nye County is paying to train and give them the experience and they're up and leaving. And it's not just, we have candidates that live in Las Vegas and work here, but we're losing candidates that live in Prump, that it makes sense to drive to Vegas for $12 an hour more. And so it's just something that has been coming to a head for some time now. I know Commissioner Crone is aware of this. We've had these discussions in the years past that we're not competitive and we're working towards it. But I think we need to look at expediting how we're getting towards that or we're just not going to have the bodies to fill. Las Vegas is suffering too and with what they're at, so they are taking all the good candidates, giving us the leftovers and then taking the leftovers once they're a valid candidate with our training. And so it's just an issue that we hope that we can address with the Commissioners going forward to try to solve this problem.
So Captain, I've, I've worked in Vegas, I've worked in Carson City, I've worked up north. And as you know, we're neighbors with the surrounding counties and I've spoken to the different sheriffs. Now, as I mentioned earlier, there's an NRS that prohibits your office to put anybody under contract, to hold them to the department for, for any amount of time. So my, my presentation to the sheriffs was that when they go to the police chiefs and Sheriff's Association meetings and they have the camaraderie and they're sitting and they're having the meeting of the minds and they're sitting down and they need to commit with each other, for example, to say, how long have you been working for the office? How long? Oh, six months, two years? After four years, come and see me, type thing. But you're stealing, you're absolutely right. You're stealing from each other, from each other's department. You're saving $60,000 per individual on everybody's budget. And it seems that the police chiefs and the sheriffs don't respect each other and care because it's a savings, a great savings off of their own budget, right?
That's 100% true. Sheriff McGill just came down from Sheriff and Chiefs meeting last week and one of the other counties, or two of our deputies are leaving to next week, came to him and asked if they could take the dog that they're currently assigned because they want to use the dog in their county. That it's not just taking people, they want to take our resources too. So it is just a tough situation where they do not care. If they could take our guns with them, they would. It's, we're just really in a tough spot right now and I appreciate that you guys are aware of it and are.
We are aware and I'm not sure that the, the hiring incentive is the answer because you're absolutely right. As soon as that timeframe, whatever is mandated, it, they're gone.
No, we need definitely a long-term solution. And one of the things we've been really focusing on under Sheriff McGill is sourcing talent locally instead of getting from outside communities, people who have ties to the community who aren't going to leave at the first drop of a hat of $2 an hour more. But when you're looking at $7, $8 an hour more, it's kind of hard to say, none of us get in this job for the money, but you also don't stay in the job to be poor. So we have to or not keep up with our competitors. So it's just something that, we're bringing it up here. We don't have a solution right now. We just want to make you guys aware that we're going to need to work together to solve this problem and it's not going to be an easy solve.
Right. If you remember Commissioners, we just had a collective bargaining group last, last year. We talked about this. We actually did some maneuvering within the collective bargains to make those changes, to bring up the increases that we're talking about. I mean, so we're trying to bring those levels up by year by year to try to get them to be comparable. So we are working together to make that happen.
Yeah.
Yes. And Captain, please, just as a reminder, I've, I've met with you a couple of times. I know how you are and how the sheriff is and some of the other officers. Is, you know, money's not everything. Appreciation goes a long way. Where, where you have your deputies that are out in the field and they are putting their lives on the line, just, just as the fire and EMTs, we, we all put our lives on the line, right? But appreciation goes a long way, that if you can and if you haven't, please think about it, to implement this in their daily briefings when they return from safely and they're about to do the shift change, is that we appreciate everything that they've done today, yesterday, every day. And that may help with, with the retention.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland, did you have anything?
Yes, Captain Means, I'm hoping to come up with a solution in the near future. We are working on our justification for all these positions and the pay grade that each one, each position has. What I would like to do is I'd like to ask you to go back to your sheriff. You have 30 positions that are currently vacated from what you've just. You have 30 positions that are currently vacated from what you've just said. Our sheet shows 16 plus three detention technicians as of the print of this particular sheet. Those 30 positions, if they're not filled, is an unrealized outgo of over $3 million, okay? If truly your need is for an administrative tech, then change one of your deputy positions to an administrative tech and get it done, because you're never going to fill all these deputy positions, there's always going to be two, three, four, five of them open. So let's take care of your immediate need, and reclassify one of your deputies into an administrative tech and call it a day. That's my word, thank you.
One of the open requirements, not one of your deputies.
You mean they have to qualify too?
I don't think, I don't think...
Just kidding around, guys.
I don't think the deputy's interested, Captain. Commissioner Boskovich, did you have anything?
I am in complete support of these guys. I know a lot of them and, and see them a lot of times on a regular basis, and they're some of the hardest-working, most professional people I have ever met, including the fire department as well. So we need to do whatever we can to, to help them get what they need taken care of. And not only that, but I think Joe is doing a great job, and that office seems to be pretty cohesive, so I love that.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cox?
I know for a fact the wages are lower than they should be. I don't think we give the Sheriff's Department enough of a budget to start with, and the way they fulfill that budget is they add on grants all year round. I called Boulder City, they start their people in the academy at $25 an hour. So we were way behind, we were doing $14 an hour with our officers on the street when I started. And, I don't know, I eventually managed to get somebody to listen to me, because now they're up, I think, from $18 to $23 an hour. And if you don't pay them properly, then you get bad officers that are on the tank. And I've lived in areas where I've seen that happen, and I want it to happen here. I would rather take a few dollars out of everybody else's pocket, since this is a position that we have to have here, positions we have to have here, and give them what they deserve. I know we can't compete with the big cities, and their jobs aren't quite as strenuous as they are in the big cities, but when we need them, we need them. So I, that's one of the changes I would like to see, is the sheriff asks for a larger budget. And I know we don't have a lot of money, but we have had access to some really good grants, and I think we're going to get some coming, that he needs to watch to put in for. And other than that, I support them fully. Whatever they need, we should get them. And I do support hiring locally. I believe I saw a sign out there that's to that effect, if, actually. In the long run, we'd be a lot better off, all the way around, if we hired locally. I know it's been done in other cities, I'm not really sure that they can't say it's unconstitutional or whatever, if you just tell them, "If you want this job, you will move here, or you will live here now, and, or you can't have the job if you live in another town or city somewhere else." So you might consider that one. That's basically all I have, but I know that we're hurting in that department, and I can't even argue that case, because I've been trying to promote that case for years. And I certainly don't want us to have officers that end up on the tank because we don't pay them enough and they qualify for food stamps. And that is happening in the United States in many places. So then it ends up that those police officers go the other direction, and they put people, bad people, on the streets to sell drugs, to make extra money, and it ends up going in the officer's pocket, and then you really have a problem. I just hope none of that's going on here. I think we have some really good officers on the street right now. Thank you, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Cox. Captain, if you don't mind, I'll open it up for public comment.
Well, may I? I'm sorry. I was afraid you didn't hear me, and you didn't hear me.
I did not hear, I was listening to Commissioner Cox.
The only other suggestion I have is a reorganization. And by that I mean, it's costing a deputy, it's costing $58,000 for benefits and $48,000 in deputies, is what they're making. Reorganization, to me, is eliminate however many deputies it takes to make your pay grade great enough for retention to continue, and still be able to be a functioning organization. I, if you could immediately do something that would inject that into your current SO, it would be a wonderful thing for your existing officers to have that pay increase by you eliminating a portion of the officers that you have now. Food for thought to take back to the sheriff, please. Thank you.
Ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, let me open this up for public comment at this time. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Ms. Hollis here in Prump, go ahead, please.
Thank you. This is on, Marian Hollis, H-O-L-L-I-S. Whether there are 30 vacancies or 14 vacancies, it's too much. To suggest to take a deputy off the street and put them in the office, makes absolutely no sense to me, none. I've been in businesses lately where they have to lock their door if one person comes into the store, because the riffraff are coming in behind them and, and causing thefts and stressful conditions for the business owner. Some businesses are forced to lock their restrooms, but it doesn't matter. Personally, I have a granddaughter who works at the DQ, right next to the park, they have to call for help several times, sometimes in a shift, because of the people coming in, using the bathrooms to shoot up. And the officers are so stretched that they have to figure out which is the more important one to go to, and sometimes they've waited 40 minutes, and it's, it's not your department's fault, I want you to know that. And I have to agree with Commissioner Cox, that perhaps one of the considerations for working in the department be jurisdictional. I know in Boston, if you're a Boston cop, you have to live in Boston. So then, so if you have that interest to work in Prump, hire them on, and that's part of the contract that you stay in that jurisdiction. But to take somebody else off the street and put them at a desk where they may not even be skilled to do that job, I don't know, I'm just saying that, it, it frightens me. And I've heard from two business owners now, who, who have to secure their business if there's even one person in the store. And that's, that's just not supposed to happen in this day and age. So you can be all giddy about the $1 million you have in the Prump budget, but be realistic and put that money with either the fire department or the police department. That's where it should go, along with everybody else. But please, it's, it's getting dangerous. Even Ms. Fiore said in her backup material, the increase in crime and the severity of the crimes are, are off the charts now. So this is not the time to be, I don't want to say tight with the money, but be realistic with the money. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Lilly, here in Prump.
I, Dwight Lilly, L-I-H-Y. Yes, I have to concur with what the last commenter made. We've had crime rates here, I don't know what the percentages are, this is my 20th year living in Prump, it's gotten worse and worse and worse every year. The courts are overwhelmed, district attorney's office is overwhelmed, everybody's overwhelmed. The primary responsibility, as far as I'm concerned, of an elected official in your guys' capacity is the safety and health and welfare of the public out here. Talk about all the other department budgets, they're important, but to protect the citizens against the criminal activity here. Now, we have more pot places in town than we do fast food restaurants, and I've always thought that the increase in reluctant reliance on revenue from the pot industry was going to increase the amount of drug incidents here in Prump, and I think that's bearing itself out. The drugs bring the crime, and it's, these officers out here need your financial support in order to get the job done right. So I really hope you take a serious look at their budget request, above and beyond what you're looking at some of these others. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Paulsen here in Prump, please.
Earlier, I voiced my support for the fire department, first responders. That goes twofold for our Sheriff's Office. Not to repeat what Mr. Lilly said, I'll let that stand. $7 to $10 million for civic centers and ballfields, and we can't retain deputies. We're not retaining deputies because we're losing deputies, because they're not getting paid enough. And I've known about this for several years. They come here, they train, they learn, and they leave. And you're right, incentives don't work, two-year bonuses don't work, because, well, like I said, once that, that time period is up, they're gone. Keeping them here would be a great anchor, they have to live here, they have to work, if they work here, they have to live here. Maybe an incentive about helping them own a home here, investing in real estate. But more importantly, I hear about collective bargaining, I hear, there's bargaining going on, so who are they bargaining with? Do they, I know you can't answer my question, and I'm kind of new to all of this, but obviously they're getting, it's our, it's our county sheriff's office, so they're getting paid by our county. You guys are representing the county. So you're the county, we have the district attorney, we have the county clerk. I want these deputies to get what they need. Stop fighting them, give them what they need, okay? Because they're underpaid, they're grossly underpaid, and this is ridiculous. And yes, the crime is growing. I've been here, only been here five years, and I'm seeing things that are just appalling. It, there's a pattern. And I, and I watched it happen, begin 15 years ago in California, and I can't believe it's happening here now. And part of it is by some of the decisions that you've been making with your pot farms and your pot lounges and your dispensaries. And I'm seeing the kids in the high school. If you could see what the marijuana you guys are allowing is doing, they're getting it from their parents, they're getting it from their older siblings, they're just getting their hands on it. And it's cooking their brains. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Hearing and seeing, no public comment in Tonopah and Prump, and on the phone, I will close public comment.
Chair, I know that you realize this, but maybe the public doesn't. This is our budget that we have to hold up every year by our income. And our income has to be justified by the taxes and permit fees and whatever else we use to collect money to hold up our budget.
Licensing fees.
Licensing fees, everything that we do administratively. The things that we're using to build structures are grants, they're one-time injections. So we don't get to use those grants to hold up our budget, it's not allowable by the grant itself. Thank you.
I guess there was some clarification that needed to be made. We're not taking deputies off the street.
No.
It was actually a, one of the items that are still open, that has not been filled, is what they're talking about.
Okay.
Add your public comment.
Thank you. Okay, I will close number 12 at this time, and move on to...
Thank you, Captain Means, for coming to see.
Yes, thank you, Captain. And thank you, deputies. Are you ready?
Tell Sheriff we said hi.
You ready? Number, number 14, please.
Item 14, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the District Court.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, how are you today?
Good afternoon.
First of all, thank you so much. As you know, we are super shorthanded at the District Court, and I'm in the middle of a murder trial, so I discharged my jury and got right over here, so thank you, I, I really appreciate your willingness to work with the District Court. You know, this is always a difficult thing for both the District Court and for the Commission, because as you know, we're state employees here, asking for you to fund our department, because you're an unfunded mandate, we're an unfunded mandate. And I will tell you, it, it involves working together. I understand that we've got some budget shortfall, and I was looking to see, what is it that we really need as a District Court? What could we perhaps, you know, delay for another year, or another couple of years, working together? Because that's what we need to do. I, I will tell you that our, that our workload is at an all-time high. I've heard other people say Sheriff's Office, Justice Court, District Court is at an all-time high. The one thing that, in looking at the things that we've requested, I haven't funded my law clerk, I'm in the process of trying to do that. I've always tried to cut costs, because we're not sure how the other depart, where, where we're going to be with other department matters. I will tell you that the Nevada Legislature, effective July 1st of 2023, has doubled the witness fees and mileage, so the, and, and they have shortened the distance for mileage. So we're going to see, we figured out at least $1,500 on an average jury trial, that's going to increase the costs, just so you know. And we had nothing to do with that, you know. In fact, it was interesting, in a jury trial that I'm currently serving in, one of the jurors said, "Well, if I'm going to get that much money, I'll serve." So I said, "Great." So now, that's exactly, needless to say, they're not on the jury. But, but that does become a problem. Truly, the thing that would help the District Court, in my opinion, the most, is there's a lot of bureaucratic red tape to fund our positions. I reached out and found out that in order to have a budgeted position funded, you know, first we have to get the, we have to go through the computerized DocuSign system. First, we have to get the permission of the Assistant County Manager, then it has to go to an HR Generalist, then it has to go to the HR Director, then it has to go to the Grants Department, then it has to go to Finance, then it, or it may have to go Finance, then Grants, then to the Finance Director and to the County Manager. Now, this is positions that are already, that are already funded in the budget. And then if nobody objects, and they all signed off, sign off, we can hire a position. I can't tell you that how, in, in March of 2023, we are finally able to hire for a position that we started, part-time position, no benefits, that we started in May of 2021. So this is killing us. So of the, of the things that are really on the list, you know, I have to tell you, we've been working with the county, I see Stephanie Elliott's here, and one of the things, we've used a legal secretary to also be the Drug Court Coordinator. And one of the things that we've talked about is, we're going to apply for another grant next year, is funding that Drug Court Coordinator out of that grant. So we're, we're trying to work together to take less and get more, if that makes any sense. You know, I, we had requested a District Court hearing master, and I think one of the things that, we have a lot of people who ask for settlement conferences, and we can settle about 95% of all of the civil cases, especially divorces, we get a lot of divorces. Here's the problem, that takes away from the rest of the time we have as judges. And I thought about it, and I said, "Of these things that we're requesting, what could we do the least with?" This is what I've done to the attorneys, it's time that you stepped up and talked to your clients and got these cases settled. You know, don't put the burden on the judges, put it back on, but what they want to do is, they don't want to have to charge the clients, so they want the courts to settle that dispute. And I, I honestly think, when I was looking at this list, how, what could we do, what could we delay? I think that's a position we could delay, on behalf of the District Court.
The District Court Master.
The District Court Master. Why, I love, I put it on every year, because we're burdened. But on the flip side of that is, you know, we have to work together, we understand that you have less funds, so how can we do more with less? And, and I think the position is, no, the District Court won't do that. We had actually reached out to the Supreme Court, they have a senior judges program, and said, "Hey, can you come and help us?" The response we got back was, Clark County judges quit asking senior judges to sit on their... your vacation track." And we never heard back, the Rurals. We kind of take a low priority on that. So either they're going to have to hire, there are a number of retired judges that sit on mediation, JAMS, et cetera, but I think it's time that we put the burden back as a court, looking at this realistically, and say to them, you know, "Times are tough." And where can... What can you do to help the courts? Well, maybe it's not always the government, maybe it's putting it back on those private attorneys to say, "You guys step up, and you hire an outside mediator and get this case resolved." But we have a number of times where they want us to resolve them, and I... From going forward...
Do you mandate that?
Well, going forward, I simply say, "I'm sorry, the court's time is limited, and we are so busy with the existing caseload that we can't settle your cases for you." But in looking at the list realistically, you know, what... If there were things that we could cut out, I think that would be it. Like I said, the things that would help us the most is that for budgeted positions, if you wouldn't make us jump through the rigmarole of all of these massive hoops to just get... Let us get people hired, let us get the job done, would really help us as a district court. I have the funding for a part-time secretarial position. If we get the additional funding, a half-time position, that would be greatly beneficial. Right now, I really operate my department with one full-time position. That's Chris Romondo, my JEA. I do work very closely with our court administrator, Jay Clifford. I have Melissa Stapp, who runs the drug court and does... Pays the bills and does a few things, but really doesn't... I type a lot of my own stuff. I have to, I don't have a choice. But just realistically, the other thing is, as you know, we're trying to transition to a clerk of the court. It's time Esmeralda stepped up on some of this stuff, too. You know, it isn't just Nye County, it's Nye and Esmeralda County. And as we make this transition, they're going to have to step up, and they've been told that. But I think they need to realize they are going to have to step up. Now, it depends on how you look at it, fortunately or unfortunately, we don't have many cases in Esmeralda County. And so, you know, coming up to what is the appropriate split, is it a percentage of the cases? They don't prosecute a lot of cases out of Esmeralda County. So we have more civil cases than we have criminal. But they do need to pay for a portion of our court administrator. We've asked for an assistant court administrator as we transition over. But again, they're going to have to step up and pay for part of this. That's only fair to the citizens of Nye County.
To the Chair. Judge, have they been paying currently to...
They... Well, see, currently, we have a clerk of the court, we have a clerk of the court for Nye County and a clerk of the court for Esmeralda County. So what we're suggesting, or what we want to do is transition, so, for example, the filing fees are different in Esmeralda County than they are in Nye County, because some of that are ordinances that are passed. So what we want to do is streamline that. Our ultimate goal would be to have a case management system that would really be processed in a central location. We are going to need people to work the courtrooms. When Judge Lane and I go, we need a clerk who's familiar with the courts. One of the things we did put in for Esmeralda County, just so you know, for their budget, and I did attend their budget meeting, was, "Look, we have a JAV system here in Tonopah. We have no JAV system in Goldfield." And when we got our current JAV system, which we paid for through court improvement funds, we offered to give them our old system, and it's pretty old now. I think it's probably too late now to do that, but they refused. I don't know how they could refuse, but they refused to pay for the installation costs. So our JEAs don't know what goes on when the judges sit in the courtrooms, courtroom in Goldfield. I have a court reporter that reports both civil and criminal, so I can keep track of it. But that's part of this transitioning to a centralized court, having electronic filing. I've been working with the DA's office. It's nice to have DA Koonzie, who understands and has worked in all these different courts. And we've talked about, how can we do more with less? And, you know, we got a new case management system. Actually, you guys funded it a few years ago, and I had some reservations about it for a reason. And I will tell you this, that the Supreme Court gave them a year to get into compliance. They never got into compliance, it doesn't collect, they'd never done Nevada before, which was my concern. They don't collect what the Supreme Court wants. Then the Supreme Court jumps on the district court judges about that we don't have the statistical reporting. And I just surmise this, that the statistical reporting is so important for federal money that they get to operate the state court system. So... But anyway, that's an aside, but it's working together to get things... Sometimes we're penny-wise and pound foolish, and it's better, in my opinion, to do it right in the beginning, so we don't, what I feel like, Groundhog Day, keep going back and starting those processes over and over. Because, you know, we scanned our files, our existing files, and they've never been uploaded into our system. Frightening. So, you know, again, it's... Sometimes people don't understand, you know, sometimes we look at the bottom dollar without really understanding the processes and how they work. So again, like I said, as we're here today, I understand we've got a budget shortfall, and we're going to have to work together. And we'll have to cut some of our wish list down to what can... What do we need that we can really function?
Thank you, Judge.
Saying that, you mentioned the law clerk was still on your wish list.
It is. It's... And, you know, I've had the best luck, I know the county's advertised for me in the past, but when I've done my own advertising, AKA got ahold of the law school, posted it myself, I was able to fill the position. It seems like when we get out to Indeed and some of these things, people see it, they see the salary, they go, "Oh, I should apply for this." "Well, what are your qualifications?" "Well, you have none." "Okay." But... But so we are working on that, and then if I could... I do have part-time... I have a part-time position, I've got the money. Again, I haven't filled that either. If I could have the additional half of that, that would help me in my department.
Liz, can you show us what's going on there with monies, please?
Yes, if we can put the spreadsheet back up. Now, Judge, the law clerk is already budgeted, so that's not included in this. We recently were able to move that DocuSign forward, so Judge will be able to fill that position, so that's not included in here, it's already budgeted.
Perfect.
The part-time position that Judge is requesting is the third one on the line there. We are currently budgeted at a part-time, no benefits. This would be the addition of the other part-time, and now we have to fund...
So what she's saying to you is that we actually didn't fund the part-time position, we funded the full-time position for the law clerk, so that helps tremendously.
The part-time is budgeted, but not as a full-time position.
Of course, yes.
So we'd be adding basically half of a position plus the benefits.
Right.
Is what we would be... What we would add.
So before we go much further...
Sure.
I don't know, when I look at our list of unhired, okay? We have a tremendous list of open positions and posted positions. And when I look at this, I look and see there's drug court facilitators?
Well...
Three of them. And they're not getting filled.
And they're government-funded.
Should we swap the money?
You can't.
No, it's government-funded.
You can't. It's grant money, but here's the problem, we've been trying to fill those positions...
Because it's still low pay.
Well, no, it's not that we can't... We can't get it through the DocuSign process. So we're hung up through the DocuSign process to be able to go out and hire those. That's what I'm saying. We have... It's money that we're going to use it or lose it. But we can't use it...
This is a grant.
Right, because I can't jump through all of these hoops so I can hire those people. It's... Quite frankly, it's silly. It's ridiculous.
So Judge, is this... Is what you just said in reference to earlier, when you said that you named about six different departments within the county? That it has to go to finance, has to go to HR, has to go here, has to go there.
Yep.
They have to sign off. So if that's the case, and it's not just going to be for you, because the direction to staff is that, you know, here we're... We have candidates for positions, and we're talking about retention with the last department office that was in front of us with the captain. This is part of retention. The lead is hot, and we take so much time to sign off on them, it gets cold and they move on, and it's... This is not a lot of money to fill this position, especially if we have people that are qualified, that are interested, that are passionate, and they want to do this and they want to be helpful. So the direction would be pleased to, whatever the position is, is to help expedite, help expedite these documents. So the department heads, for example, and in this case, the judge can receive that document back with everybody's approval, and they're able to move on and do their job and hire. I mean, this is a little alarming, because if I'm not mistaken, you said when this first started, the process was back in 2021.
2021, for a part-time, no benefit, fifteen-hour position at fifteen bucks an hour. And then I've got two that are nine hours a week and another fifteen-hour-a-week position. So it's... This is just off the drug court grant. But again, that's very frustrating. I'm not... I mean, I appreciate wanting everybody to sign off, but the reality is, and I don't like to say this, but as the district court, as the state court, you provide the money, we do the hiring. But just having us jump through all of these hoops, it really... By the time we get through all the hoops, the candidates that we have in mind are gone.
I understand, Judge, and that's why I prefaced with, it's not just you or your department, judicial court, it's every department, and I know that you hear excuses every day. In your world, you hear excuses. I'm not making excuses. 2021, we were in... Right in the middle of COVID, and that may be the excuse, I don't know, but I've asked, you heard, you heard my ask, is that we help expedite for all of the departments, for all of the positions. If there's a candidate that qualified, they pass their background, their drug test, et cetera, we need to get them hired.
Thank you. And I will tell you that whoever got up and said that drugs are a huge problem, I will tell you that working together with the justice court, so when they release people, they... I have asked them to release them with certain conditions, no alcohol, no drugs, no recreational medical marijuana, no adverse contact with law enforcement. So then, when they appear in the district court, we can drug test them. Do you know that ninety-five percent of those people test positive the first time they come into the courts? Ninety-five percent of those people. So you know what our problem is? Our problem is, we've got a community of people who are using drugs. And I will tell you, the other day in court, I said to somebody, "Do you use DMT?" And he took a step back, and he said, "Do you know what DMT is?" I said, "I most certainly do." And he said, "Yeah, I've been a longtime DMT user." Well, part of, like, the district court, working with the DA's office, working with the sheriff's office, working with the justice court, is the officer unseen recognized the use of methamphetamine, but did not recognize the use of DMT. And just so you know, DMT is synthesized ayahuasca. And ayahuasca came to the forefront with Aaron Rodgers, because he used the plant form of ayahuasca and said, "Oh, this is the greatest thing ever." Well, I asked the drug court about it. "Hey, how many of you use DMT?" I saw about a third of them raise their hands. I said, "So what were your... What were your symptoms?" They said, "It was just like LSD, we had hallucinations." So I see some of these people coming up to us, I read their file as it comes up, and I say, "Wow, we've got some issues here." And I will tell you that I go to training four times a year on these, I call them designer drugs, HHC, HHCO. I could go down about fourteen different things that are legal, that you can find in gas stations, but that's what we're seeing, and that's what our officers are seeing out on the streets now, too. And that's what we're dealing with as a drug court.
Excuse me. Thank you, Judge, for that information, because I never heard of DMT. But you being in charge and running, and you do a great job in both Tonopah and Prorump as far as the drug court.
Esmeralda.
And Esmeralda.
Yes.
Yes. Well, that is Esmeralda.
Oh, Matt, you're right.
I'm curious, how many... You mentioned the percentage as far as the DMT users. I know you get a show of hands. Could you tell us who comes before you that's a marijuana user?
Well, you know, interestingly about marijuana, that's interesting, because our dispensaries sell... I hate this term, but I hear people go, "Oh, I use plant." Well, in the seventies, the marijuana users were two to four percent Delta IX THC. The quote "plant" that you find at the dispensaries are about thirty-five percent Delta IX THC, but they also sell Delta VIII. They also sell HHC, HHCO. Many of the products that are sold there are synthetic cannabinoids. So that's what people don't realize, you know. And I will tell you how expensive it is, we test for some of that stuff, but a single test, if we have somebody that comes in that we routine... That we know, we just have that feeling that they're using something, but we can't find it on our standard test, and we'll send it, we'll request out to a lab, we've paid as high as a hundred and seventy dollars per one test to be able to prove. But it's come back, and we were right on some of these other things. So it's just, it's an interesting time, very interesting time. And not that, you know, we're not... I want you to know, I'm not here to bash any industry, I'm not... That's not it at all. But I'm just telling you, you know, they're... What we see as a court.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask if Commissioner Boskovich or Cox, do you have any questions for Judge Wonker, please?
I don't have any questions for the judge at this point. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you covered some great things, and I'm glad that I was able to hear her talk about the latest things on the market, but I would like to say something about marijuana. The only reason we have these dispensaries in Nevada is because the people of Nevada voted to have legal marijuana. And of course, you know, it's going to be medical marijuana to start with, and everybody goes, "Oh, don't surprise those poor people with their medicine." And then, we went from that right into recreational marijuana. I do not support marijuana, but we are guided by the NRS, and those people get state licenses, and they have a right to come here and do their business, even though we don't like it. So we are not... We have limits on us, put on by the state, as to how many dispensaries we can have, how many people can grow, how many people can cultivate, whatever they're doing with this stuff. And if you want to know if we have a bad drug problem, our biggest drug problem, and it's all over the place, is meth and fentanyl. And it's killing people. It's not making them promote, but it's killing them. I don't really believe the majority of criminals are doing marijuana. I don't do marijuana, so I don't really know anything about it, but I keep being told those people are mild. It's the people that are on the other drugs, and that's something wholly out of our control. Your biggest drug problem here belongs to the outside government. We're getting it from Mexico, we're getting it from China, we're getting it from South America, you name it. That's where our drug problem is. That's why we need more police officers. Marijuana, thinking all the marijuana in the world away from everybody, is not going to stop the crime that is brought on by people doing meth. It's one of the worst things you can ever get. I just had a friend that was murdered because he tried to help somebody get off of drugs, and it happened to be meth. And he didn't care a thing about his friend at that point, he shot him point-blank dead. And it was because he was doing meth. It didn't have anything to do with marijuana. I don't like marijuana being here, I voted against it originally. The sheriff voted against it originally, but it's here. So what we need to do is focus on the hard drugs, some of the things that the judge has mentioned today, and other items that are actually made here, transported here, sent from California through here up to Utah and Colorado. It's much bigger than most people that are sitting in the audience even realize. It's much bigger than most people that are sitting in the audience even realize. So yes, America and the world have a drug problem and it's much worse than marijuana. So if you want to do something, please get out there and start exposing how you feel about the other drugs that are the real killers. They kill in many ways, not just one.
Well, and let me, let me be clear for Commissioner Cox. I'm not saying, I said that it's the synthetic cannabinoids, which is, which is this, and I agree with her, and we have a new product that has just made it to Nevada called Gray Death. Again, we stay up on these things and Gray Death is a combination of different opioids that are, our Narcan will not reverse. So it, it's scary, the number of deaths that have occurred this year. We've had some within the drug court and outside is, it's not really reported on, but it's here, we're well aware of it, so.
Did you have anything else for the judge?
I most certainly did.
Thank you.
You mentioned quarter to clerk earlier during your discussion.
Yes.
When are we going to resolve that issue?
Well, you know, that, that requires working, working together. I know the DA's office has been busy, I've been busy, I'm shorthanded, he's shorthanded, but we're, we're working on that. We'd like to get it done. I'd like to get it done before the fiscal year starts. And I think as soon as we get through this murder trial that we're involved with, it's a lot of work and pretty high profile. As soon as that thing is done, we intend to sit down and get that done.
It causes us a problem with our budgets, the reason why we're saying that.
Sure.
And coming May 16th, we have to have something resolved because we have to have everything ready so our final budget gets turned in to the state. So it's the reason why we need to put a little bit of heat on it if we can.
We will, we will work on it as quickly as we can. Thank you. I appreciate knowing the deadline. Thank you.
Thank you Judge.
I took the opportunity when I saw her in the courtroom, we did discuss that already. So we are, we're definitely getting a meeting set up, so.
Right, thank you.
Thank you Judge for understanding our position. I'm going to open it up for public comment.
And again, thank you guys. I really appreciate you delaying this for me today. That was very kind of you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll open it up for public comment at this time. Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No Chair.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Lilly here in Perump, please.
Yes, Dwight Lilly, LA. I really appreciate Judge Wonker with her drug court. However, after losing a very good friend, Kenny Bent, one of the least appreciated assets this county's ever had, having his head blown off by a drug addict in his town, I think I would rather use a Chinese drug court where you get caught with illegal drugs and you get executed and that cleans the problem up, but we don't have that. So I hope the county does everything it can to prevent an increase in addiction in this town. And one of it would be by doing something about the marijuana situation that you guys started when you passed the marijuana licensing bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone now, please, Sam?
No Chair.
Hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump, Tonopah and on the phone, I will close public comment. And you have a half a budget that we have to take care of? Now what I've heard from the peanut gallery? Am I correct or am I wrong?
So let me clarify it on the Elizabeth Jordan for the record, for district court. The, one of the positions that's being requested is to convert that from a full-time, I'm sorry, from a part-time to a full-time. That would increase the district court budget by $63,146 for fiscal year '24. The other two positions that are being requested, one's an assistant court administrator and the hearing master that court, that judge expressed that she couldn't do without the hearing master at this point. And I know the assistant court administrator may be something that she can clarify whether she needs it now, or I know that where the, the changes that are happening within her court, that might also be put on hold for now. I, I don't know.
Judge, apparently Liz has
You heard us talking about you again.
What I heard her say is that she would like to take the part-time position to make it full-time for the law clerk and she could live without the other two. Is that what she stated?
So the law clerk's already in my budget. I have a part-time position I'd like to convert to a full-time position. The assistant court administrator, I think you kind of need to put that on hold as we work toward with Mr. Coonsy, seeing what, how this process is going to turn over. And I would think that part of that position should be funded by Esmeralda County.
That's, that's the reason why I asked the question about, are they actually paying up anything? And it sounds like they're not, but they have to.
They have to. I, I, they, they're well aware of it. I've, I told them last year and I told them this year and so they know. And it's trying to figure out, how are we going to do that? Is it a percentage of the salary that they are going to repay, Esmeralda's going to repay to Nye?
Yeah, because right now, yeah, we're, what, Nye County's doing work and not getting paid for it.
Well, truthfully, our court administrator has been, we're just trying to get Nye County under control at this point.
Okay, good.
Okay? But yes, I, I appreciate, and, and you're absolutely right. And I'm, I'm, everybody needs to pay their fair share. So what I said is the hearing master, I could do with that. I mean, I really can't, I can because I'm going to put the burden back on, yet you're exactly right, Commissioner Strickland, we're going to have to because we have to tighten our budget and that's a place I can tighten the budget.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Judge.
So with taking those items into consideration, the, the item that's in front of you now is the full-time legal secretary, taking it from a part-time to a full-time. And Judge was correct, she does have three drug court facilitators that Commissioner Strickland mentioned, but those are grant-funded positions and those unfortunately cannot be
Not included.
Not included in this.
We understand that. So that's where
The third one on the list, PT to FT, is that what we're talking about?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. Could you put, put that in there at 100%, please? To consider, thank you.
Well, also was a full-time position that she was talking to also, right? So.
That's, that's included. That's just the difference between the part-time and full-time, that's the difference that we would have to pay.
So we're only talking now one full person?
Correct.
We're talking one half person.
Well, no, it's full, it's a full person now.
Now they went full.
But she's also talking about one other person, no? We're good. Can't, we, we can't, we can't, you're just, just like the judge's quarters, you need to be on the record. Thank you Judge.
I do appreciate that. No, with the assistant, the, the hearing master, which was a position we requested, we're just going to table that, okay? We're, we're, we're short money, I can, I can deal with that.
Just wanted to make sure.
And then the other, the assistant court administrator, I don't think we can do anything with that till we figure out what we're doing. And again, the court administrator, assistant court administrator, they're going to have to be, unfortunately, Esmeralda isn't the, they don't hear nearly the volume of cases we do by any stretch of the imagination, but they still going to have to pay part of those salaries.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, Chair?
We'll bring it back around. So I'm good to close this?
Yes, at the pleasure of the Board. We can move on to the next item and continue.
And thank you Judge. And just so, just so Nye County hears that in Esmeralda County, they don't get in so much trouble. Yes, Mr. DA?
I don't think that's what was said.
Thank you Judge.
Thank you.
Good thing you, you should be living on the other side of the line. Oh, wait, you do.
They're just not prosecuted.
I, I don't think she said that either. Manager number 17, please. Manager number 17, please.
Item 17. Facilitation. For possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the Buildings and Grounds Department.
Sure, I have a disclosure to make, just so it's clear.
Yes, Commissioner.
I, I do have a, a family manager, family that works in this facilities organization, just to, anybody know.
Okay, thank you.
William Allen, A L L E N Facility Maintenance. So I came here asking for a maintenance three lead for Perump. Not asking for that today. Instead, I would just like to reclassify one of my current positions to that maintenance three lead.
Smart man, I can support that. Thank you.
Just do that through your normal process.
That's all I got.
Thank you.
Good move.
Thank you Director, and, and I apologize for keeping you here all day. Of course, we don't know, we don't know that you're going to
We don't know what you're going to say.
Reclassify, et cetera, until, until you get it.
Thank you, and I, I don't mind.
Thank you Sir.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment for the reclassification issue? Anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No Chair.
No. Okay, and hearing and seeing no public comment in Tonopah and Perump, I will close public comment. On the phone, thank you.
Do we need to get back to the assessor and see if they're, if they got everything straightened out?
Director Goldner, do we have, do we have any numbers yet between you and Liz, you and the comptroller? Yes?
Yes, I can answer that, Elizabeth Jordan. Um, yes, Alona was able to provide me with the
Hold on, I need to reopen.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, hold on one moment. Number, number nine, and we still have our assessor, Sherry Stringer in Tonopah Chambers.
Okay, item nine, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the assessor's office.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, please comptroller.
Thank you. So the difference between the data collector and the personal property appraiser, that's the step one, the difference is about $2,500.
That's including benefits?
Correct. Correct.
I wanted you to make sure.
I, I had to check that myself twice too.
Okay.
Kind of blew me away.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Did you have any questions on that? Sherry?
No, I, I think I'm good with that if, if we're still entertaining the idea of a personal property appraiser.
I sure think it's a great idea, seems we're going to lose somebody in September. It kind of gives a, gives that
And we, we need to see that on the board when we get done with all of our juju's and see what that looks like.
Now, now Ms. Stringer, if, if you don't mind me asking this question, when the appraisers go out into the field and you are short on data collectors, are they, are they able to collect data as they're in the field and appraising?
Yes, they are. But when we have to go out and, and say we go out to Spring Mountain Raceway, you know, and, and all these new homes that are going in up there, it takes more than one person to go out there and measure up everything. I just was out there with my senior appraiser and we spent a couple of hours out there measuring concrete and curves and, you know, seeing, you know, what they've done in their backyard as far as block walls go and stuff. And sometimes it's, it's not a one-person job, it's a two-person job.
Yes, I understand. And just so you know, I like to take the stupid end of the measure, the tape.
So he's volunteering, he's ready.
Yep.
Ms. Stringer, though
Put your sneakers on, I'll take you.
Right? Sherry, those are million-dollar properties up there, so I guess we could send a couple people out.
Yeah, but that, that's not just, I'm just using that as an example, that I was out last week with my appraiser. And, and I'll go out with any one of them if they need my help. That, that's not the issue. The issue is that, you know, when you're doing a housing tract that has, you know, 10 or 15 brand-new homes in it, it takes more than one person to be able to go out there and pick up all the, the new construction that's happening.
There's probably some folks listening on the phone saying, well, maybe we shouldn't have that many. Then wouldn't, just, just kidding, just.
Yeah, I was saying the same thing. They might start looking at our personal property real close if we don't watch it.
That's my job.
Thank you. Commissioners Boskovich and Cox, hopefully you heard the, the difference that was explained to us by our comptroller. Did you have any questions?
I did hear the difference. I'm sorry, I did hear the difference and I don't have any questions and I am in support.
Thank you.
I think it added up to about $200 extra a month, $10 a day, whatever. Anyway, difference in the two, I'm surprised that they were so close together, but, okay, thank you.
Thank you Commissioners. Okay. No, I believe I have to open public comment again.
Yes, you do.
Yes? Do we have anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No Chair.
Hearing and seeing no public comment, Tonopah and Perump on the phone, I will close public comment at this time. I want to thank you very much for your patience, Sherry. I, I know you're waiting for an answer from us.
Yes, I am.
We, we are doing the final
I'll wait here all day.
We're not doing the final budget today.
The lights go out at 5 o'clock in Tonopah.
We'll be doing that when we do the all-up.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much and thank Justin Forrest as well. Appreciate it. Can we take a 10-minute break, please? And we'll be back here at 4:20. Thank you.
Do you post the tentative budgets? Jake is looking.
We have a minute left. Okay. Welcome back, it's 4:20. Let me know when you're ready, manager. Let me know when you're ready, Manager. So me and you, ready? I think we're rushing.
Yes, I'm ready.
Number nineteen, please.
Item nineteen, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to determine if sufficient financial resources are available to increase the compensation of elected county officers and the Board of County Commissioners pursuant to NRS 245.0435 for fiscal year 2024.
Mr. DA, please.
Yes, I needed to, uh, I looked at this item and was kind of curious by it. This is really an antiquated item, this is something that you had to do previously when there was these pay increases. Those pay increases no longer exist. So if you look at the statute, what it indicates is that you have to approve any increase over the past year. Well, there is no increase over the past year, because they're no longer in place. So there really is no reason for you to take any action on item nineteen and
So we can simply not hear it?
Just not hear it, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on then, thank you for that explanation. Number twenty, please, Manager.
Item twenty, for possible action, discussion and deliberation to determine if sufficient financial resources are available to increase the compensation of justice of the peace pursuant to NRS 4.040 for fiscal year 2024.
I don't know what that one is.
If I, this is Elizabeth Jordan, the justice of the peace, they have the similar, the similar NRS as the Board of County Commissioners where it would have to be brought forward for an increase. In the past, when the Board of County Commissioners would approve or deny the elected officials and the Board of County Commissioners increase, the justice of the peace would follow suit accordingly. This item still remains because it, it, it doesn't just arbitrarily, or by, they don't have a CBA like our other employees.
They don't get a COLA, they don't get a cost of living increase automatically?
Not by NRS, no.
No, again, they're elected officials, they're in the same boat we are in.
But they fall under a different NRS, or it has to come in separately.
Correct.
But we just
So, so we'll put it in the same classification as the, as number nineteen?
Correct, thank you.
Thank you, so we'll
Does that fit, Mr. DA, yes?
That, that works.
Okay, thank you. And, um, last but not least, number twenty-three, please.
Item twenty-three, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for fiscal year 2024 for the Road Department.
Who needs roads, we need just dirt, roads, and horses and buggies. They'll take care of that problem.
You had all day to come down that ramp.
Good afternoon, almost evening, Commissioners.
State and spell your name, please, for the record.
There yet, sir? Thomas Boling, B O L L I N G. So I have three positions on the agenda for today. Like to take them separately. A finance position, finance, financial manager yeah, position for Public Works is the first one. I'm asking for a financial manager position for Public Works. This is a completely new position within the county. It's never been put together, didn't have a job description, none of that stuff, okay? Savannah, Alona, and I finalized the job description last September. And then we put it through the processes, okay? It has since been reviewed and approved by the county manager and the union. So everybody's on board with this position. The work for this position would consist of procurement, including all of the bidding processes, contracting, budget monitoring, and forecasting, internal auditing, research grant opportu, researching grant opportunities, as well as researching more available funding opportunities for Public Works. Basically, take care of every financial aspect of Public Works. It'll also do internal audits, and make sure that our budget is being spent appropriately. In the past, Public Works has experienced massive delays in all aspects of procurement and contracts. This position would alleviate those delays entirely. Also, with a person in the department having a daily look into the finances, we would be able to fully use the road funds every year. So, right now, we do not have any prospects of increasing the budget for the road funds. So in the past, the directors were trying not to run out of money every year, and just doing it blindly. Instead of having somebody in the department that watched the road funds, that watched, hey, we have X amount of stuff, you need to start backing off on spending here, you need to start doing this there. So that led to a overabundance of extra funds every year. And they just kept piling up, and piling up, piling up, until what we got this last year was five million dollar carryover. That's a lot of money to carry over, that's been piling up for years, when you could have been spending it on maintenance on the roads. Okay? There are so many pros for this position, and very little cons. It only makes sense for us to approve this. Okay, with that, I'll leave, open it up to your guys' questions.
Thank you Director, is one of the pros that, that this position, if approved, would they be assisting and helping with administering any grants?
Yes.
Helping the grants administrator, the county grants administrator, they'd be working together?
Yes. As much as possible, as much as they would need for them to help them.
Do you have a projection, is it seventy percent, or greater?
Commissioners, if, if I may, I don't have a percentage of what that would alleviate from the Finance Department. Something to keep in mind with this position, this position that Bolin is requesting will come, will help the department, their department with the documentation of bids, contractual, and like he explained, his day-to-day budget operations. However, is our wish for Finance Department that all those items, once they've been completed at his office, they would have to come to Finance for final review? Because Finance ultimately does have the requirements that we have to, of course, adhere and follow the policies, not only of the county, but of the NRS, and comply with the annual audit. Of course, we would work hand-in-hand with Department head Bolin, but some of the final processes would have to remain with Finance. He is correct, they do have a large budget, and they do have a lot of bids and contracts that must be reviewed, in most cases annually, because most of our contracts are annually. And of course, the projects, they are time-consuming as far as building those bid packages.
Currently, we're doing this, had done the same thing with Sheriff's Department. And when the Sheriff's Department does, spends their money, they have to go through you also, correct?
Correct, that would be the position that was created, that currently trustee holds. The Sheriff's Office does have the second largest budget within the county, and they do, they've
Who's number one?
It would be Public Works.
Okay, thank you very much.
And the base, but yes, to answer your question, trustee does complete all their financial and the review of their day-to-day operations and their budget. And we work for the final, either set in the budget, of course, the Board of County Commissioners, but however, their forecasts and those items are still completed within Finance.
All right, that being said, we had we know that there's a lot of moving parts when it comes to contracts, management of grants, and procurement. And that's all being done within your department currently, okay? And for all of these entities, except for the Sheriff's Department, to an extent. So, wouldn't it behoove us to put a financial manager in place to relieve the Finance Department of all of the Public Works stuff, and have one person concentrating on just Public Works projects? And their budgets, and their grants? That's my feeling.
And, and if I may, the idea of the, for this individual would be that they would be trained, they would be, everything through the Finance Department. So they would go through the whole process, do most of the work, and they'll know that, hey, you know, this, this person's been trained, and then they could just do a quick review of what's going on, instead of the weeks and weeks it takes to get everything reviewed nowadays. Before they put it out to the DA, before they put it, you know, and that kind of stuff, so. The idea is to alleviate a lot of the work that the Finance Department has to go through.
Which is gonna help all the other departments, frankly.
Which is correct, yeah.
Because they all have needs with contracts, grants, and procurement, too.
Correct, in the last year, we've put fourteen bid items through the Finance Department. It's more than one a month. Well, it takes way more than a month to get it through, so, if you can understand that. I mean, that's really, it bogs down their department, in my opinion, it bogs down their apartment, their department.
Well, I can support this, but I want to ask the Director, could you reclassify one of your current positions to, to justify this, so we stay within our budget?
Okay, and I understand what you're saying, yes, I have an open position now, because I had somebody go to a different department. I wouldn't want to reclassify the open position, I would just want to leave it vacant. And the reason for that is if it comes down to it, because I had three people doing the job, and now there's only two people doing that job.
Are you talking about your Public Works Account Clerk?
Talking about, we have an Account Clerk, one, we have a Secretary, two, and we have an Administrative Secretary.
All vacant? No.
All three of those were doing, keeping everything going throughout the department, okay?
Right.
The Administrative Secretary since went to HR, and so then we promoted, or we're in the middle of promoting, the Secretary Two to the Administrative Secretary. So then the Secretary Two position will remain
Well, that's not even, I'm, I'm not, I'm open to any of the other four positions, five positions that you have open.
What other five positions do I have open?
A Worker One, a Worker Two, a Worker Three, and a Sanitation Utilities. Nope, that's Tonopah, two of those are Tonopah. So in Perump, you have a Worker Three and a Worker One that are
And we are actively trying to fill those positions.
And I'm actively asking you to reclassify that, so we stay within budget. I know that's a hard pill to swallow, but that's what the other departments have been able to do. So, I need you to consider that, thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
I'm sticking with her on this one.
My question, Director, is, and was going to be, why do we have those still available, and you're looking for?
Because we're, we are literally actively trying to fill those positions.
Okay, I mean, legitimate answer. Commissioner Boskovich, do you have anything for the Director?
Well, I love what you're doing for us, Tommy, and at the same time, I'm sticking with my girl, Deborah. Commissioner Stringer.
Commissioner Cox, do you have anything, please?
Um, not that I can think of right now.
Okay, thank you. Did you have anything else, Director, before I open it up for public comment?
Yeah. If I was to concede the Secretary Two position, would you consider it?
A reclassification by any of those positions, I would support.
Yeah, because I can't give up a road maintenance worker, or else we're gonna do less road maintenance.
I think what she was doing
That's your management decision.
I think what she's doing is kind of blackmailing to do
Yeah, I know, I can, I picked, I picked that up.
In a, in a backwards kind of way? You have options here, sure you do, go ahead, thank you.
Go ahead, Director.
I'm, let's
I think so.
Do you want to discuss the other two now, or?
You might as well discuss them, since we're, you're getting beat up so well here.
Oh, that's good, that's good. Hold on, let me get back to that page. So, lead positions, two lead positions. Currently, we have twenty-one employees in the Southern District. If we put together four crews to perform maintenance, and the projects at the same time, we are sending two crews out without a lead. Nobody to lead them on the projects, nobody to lead them on the crews. And so the way that we've been alleviating that is we've been paying people out of class. Or, the district road supervisor has been acting as a lead, instead of doing his supervisory roles, which is not right either, he needs to be supervising and planning, and figuring out what's gonna happen in the future. So, at this point Somebody has an open mic, could you please close?
Thank you.
So at this point, we can either keep paying them out of class, or we can I guess we can reclassify two of the people if we need to.
You're referring to the supervisor?
No, the
Continue paying the supervisor out of class, or the
Well, no, the supervisor would not be out of class, because it's below
He's going down.
existing grade, so, it's existing job description, so, but no, we're paying the road maintenance worker threes out of class to be a lead. So I think that we're probably just gonna reclassify.
Yes, please.
Based on the flavor of what I'm getting.
I could definitely support that, Director, thank you.
Any cost differentiation, differentials we need to understand?
There's a two-grade difference, it would be about eight percent.
So there's an eight percent difference, so we need to put that on the budget, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
I gotta say, I really appreciate you working with us, Director, I know it's hard, but it's really hard up here, too, because we want to give everybody everything, and we can't.
I understand.
Thank you.
I just, yeah. Okay. Say everything, yeah, that's fine, it'll work. So that's what I got.
Okay. Thank you. Let me open it up for public comment, please, Director. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No Chair.
Hearing and seeing no public comment in Perump and Tonopah on the phone, I will close public comment at this time. Any further questions for the Director?
No, direction of staff has been acknowledged, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Director. Number twenty-four, please.
Item twenty-four, general public comment, up to three-minute time limit per person, action will not be taken on the matters considered during this period, and
I didn't realize we were almost done, I'm sorry, I was talking to the DA.
Excuse me, we're up here, Director.
Sorry, sir, sorry, sir.
So, so let me, let me, let me close public comment, let me close public comment, and let's reopen, number twenty-three, please.
Item twenty-three, for possible action, presentation and discussion of departmental budgetary requests for the fiscal year 2024 for the Road Department.
Go ahead, Director.
Okay, I'm just making sure that we were okay
We're really good, we're really good.
Just to reclass the stuff, if I can do that internally, it doesn't have to do anything, okay?
Exactly.
Just making sure you understand it's ten two oh five fund, it's not one oh one.
We understand.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we do understand that
Okay, all right, thanks.
And thank you, Director.
Thank you. It goes from one side to the other. Number twenty-four, please.
Item twenty-four, general public comment, up to three-minute time limit per person, action will not be taken on the matters considered during this period until specifically included on an agenda as an action item.
Yes. Public comment? Yes, go ahead, Ms. Clark.
Linda Clark, C L A R K.
I'm a little confused on what happened with number, I guess it was nineteen and twenty, and what Mr. Cousy said, so, and we didn't really get a full explanation.
Can you just bring the mic down to you? Thank you.
We didn't get a full explanation of that. My opinion is, I don't want to offend anybody, and I already know there's hatred for people who live in Mountain Falls, so I don't want to make anybody else hate anybody. But, it seems like there's a lot of under-the-table stuff going on here that the public is not really being aware of. I may be wrong, I'm just a dumb blonde, but my question is, if West County is, and Nye is, and Perump is broke, and we have all these things we can't do and we can't improve, obviously, our Police Department and Fire Department are very important to all of us, and other public departments obviously are important, too. They're important to the community. We're growing. I don't know that we're growing the way we all want to. I'm not happy with the way we're growing. I'm not happy with some of the decisions that have been made by the Commissioners, and I'm gonna be honest with you. I believe, this is my opinion, nobody else has that I'm talking to, that if we're going to have these budget cuts and stuff that we can't approve because we're so broke, we obviously don't need another ballpark. Other thing that really concerned me is, you guys all asked for raises, and I know you were told no, and now it's kind of just been tabled, we don't know where we're at on it, and his answer, and I'm not blaming it him, we don't know where still we're at on that. And Ms. Fiora wants a raise, too. Why? She hasn't been here long enough to deserve it, as far as I'm concerned. Second of all, third of all, wherever I'm at, I might list, I don't think you guys deserve a raise. I'm sorry, you may think you do. We all want a raise. We don't get it, especially in this economy. All of us seniors are on a very limited budget, and so are a lot of other people in this town because all of our money is being gone because we don't have any control over it. So, if we have to make cuts in our family and our budgets and the way we live, why should you be special when the rest of us are suffering? And I'm telling you, suffering. I know people that can't buy groceries. I know people that had to give up something, a doctor's appointment, because they couldn't afford the appointment. So, I'm just asking you for, look at it from our point of view. You're just like us. You have a position. You make decent salaries for what you do. Yeah, we all want to make seven, eight hundred thousand dollars a year, or even over a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Hollis, here in Perump.
Mary Ann Hollis, H-O-L-L-I-S. I am the public, they are the public. Speaking for myself, as you know, I look at the agenda, I do my back information, and I do research off that. Recently, I didn't see backup information, although it was reported on the agenda that it was attached, so I made a FOIA request. Over four days, conversation went back and forth about this backup material. I was promised it would be posted shortly. First thing I heard this morning, I was at home watching the meeting, I was a little difficult getting the internet to work properly, but what I heard was, it wasn't necessary to post that type of information. So, again, me, the public, is frustrated because we follow the procedure, we go by what is said, we wait four days, we're made prom, well, I should say, I made, was made a promise it would be posted, and it wasn't. As for we, the public, when we sit here during a meeting and we hear things that are absolutely not accurate, and we react, we don't get a chance, and we react sometimes physically because sometimes it's so outrageous. Two of the things in particular at this meeting were, we heard that an officer would be, was suggested that an officer come off the street and go behind a desk. We heard that, and then it was argued, no, that really wasn't what we heard. We heard it. And for the second time, I've heard issues about a ball field and the budget, and during this meeting, it was stated that, well, that ball field, there's grants that are gonna fund that. There are five financial positions for the Civic Center and the Fairgrounds. Only two are funded, one through ARPA and one through HUD. The other three financial resources are Fairgrounds Room Tax, the Town of Perump Capital, and the Nye County Capital. So, again, the information that we research sometimes doesn't gel with what is said, sometimes what you say isn't what we heard, and it's very difficult. But, the bottom line is this, when did it become the norm that somebody who comes up and speaks is questioned or not given the credit that they do for having the energy to come up and speak and question things? So, that's like the bottom line. But, so, I speak for myself, the public, and we, the public, and I sense an atmosphere shift here in the past maybe year and a half where the public is, yes, we get a chance to speak, but are we heard? And therein lies the difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Lilly, here in Perump.
Yes, Dwight Lilly, L-I-L-L-I. I believe honesty is the best policy to go by, try to live that way the best I can. And I believe this somewhat was a dishonest meeting that took place here today. I requested backup material because there was items that you took action on. It wasn't requested, but I saw backup material being handed out to you and the staff before the meeting. Tells me that you probably didn't have the backup material any sooner than that, but to hold a meeting under the open meeting laws and transparency requirements or legislature is one of the keys to our democracy, not to be treaded on, but you guys treaded on it today. You know, and we should be able to look at you Commissioners and know that you're doing the best job for us, the most honest job, and it wasn't an honest job today. You violated the open meeting law requirements. That was your prerogative. Now, I've been around and round with budget. Budget's kind of a key thing for me. I went through the whole fiasco when the county was put on fiscal watch, with the way the budget was handled for the county. You guys still have not got the lesson. You know, it's crisis management when it comes to our finances in this county, and it's been going on and on and on every year. You could deny it, you could say Dwight's just always hot under the color. No. It's dishonest the way this county operates, and until you prove differently, then that's not gonna, my opinion's gonna be otherwise. And it's really sad because I, again, values, if you don't have values that you're living by, if you're not honest and have integrity, then what do you really have at the end of the day? You know, something to really think about, Commissioners. Now, we're gonna go forward from here, and we're gonna have a budget at some point in time, and I hope that it all works out for us, but I thought that there were items that I could not look at and digest before this meeting took place, that maybe I could have offered some comments that might have helped you guys along, but instead, that opportunity was taken away from me, a member of the public. I don't appreciate it. As far as a raise that you guys requested, I don't have any problem giving people raises. I have a problem when somebody runs for office on one wage and one condition, and then wants to change the rules in the middle of the game. If you want to vote in raises for, say, at the end of your term or something, then that might be something that could be worked out. But, honesty, and again, at the very first item of this agenda, public meeting, I was stopped from giving public comment on an item, and then the item was pulled at the end. I think that was a dishonest attempt to not have the public aware of the issues that were gonna be brought up. I'm sorry that this is the way it had to be today. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Paulson, here in Perump.
Mr. Lilly hit on the honesty part. When I first heard about item number nineteen, I was pretty shocked because I was at the last meeting where I heard that the town manager explained that it died in committee in Carson City. So, I thought, well, why are they bringing this up? So, I questioned it, and I actually emailed all of the Commissioners. I did hear from a couple of them, and I'm not gonna name the one that responded who said that they kind of felt that that was a legitimate thing to bring up, and by the way, they wanted the position to be full-time. Not a former Commissioner, a present sitting Commissioner. So, that is an issue, that's why I was here today, and so it was pulled. And I have to wonder if it was pulled so that these issues could not be brought to the public, discussed publicly. I apologize, I'm a little tired and I'm a little irritated because I do feel that also this was handled dishonestly, because it's easy to just pull the item and not address it. So, I'm glad it was pulled, I'm glad it's been tabled, I'm glad you could see that the concern here is making sure our first responders are helped. Definitely, our judges are helped with the backup they need. Personally, I think we need bailiffs in the courts. That was discussed earlier today where Ms. Fiori said, get rid of the bailiffs. I don't agree with that, actually. I think you need bailiffs in every courtroom. Okay. Anyway, I agree, this was dealt with dishonestly, and I hear things, I listen, I definitely heard somebody suggest that a deputy be pulled off the street and given a dust job, and so did the detective who was sitting next to me, and you should have seen the look on his face. Please be honest with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else on the phone, please, Sam?
No, Chair. Hi, Chair, I'm not letting this go. My request for the deputy, you gonna close it?
Let me close.
My request for the deputy was really clear. It was a reclassification, no different than any of the other requests that we made from any of the other departments. We asked that the Director for Public Works reclassify one of his people. We asked that other department heads do the same, and that's all I asked for. I asked that one of your current positions at the current Sheriff's Department within their budget reclassify to what they need instead of having thirty deputy positions that we can't fill. And that was my comment. As far as being dishonest, the items were pulled nineteen and twenty because we were advised by our DA that we did not need to hear them, we had no action to be taken. So, they should, it's an old pullover item for when we were connected to the bargaining unit that said no elected official would get a raise, and we're talking about District Attorney, Assessor, Treasurer, no one would get a COLA, a three percent raise unless that bargaining unit got a raise, too. And so, we heard that every single year and every single year, none of the elected officials for Sherry Stringer didn't get a raise for six consecutive years because of it. Now, that's no longer in the bargaining unit for us to even talk about, so it was pulled. And I'm sorry that you don't know every intricate part of what goes on at this Commission, but neither do I, and I'm a sitting Commissioner. It's a big job, and we study and we work every single day at it. Thank you for your patience, Chair.
Item twenty-five, Commissioner Manager comments. This item limited to announcements or topic issues proposed for future workshops' agendas.
Commissioner Boskovich, did you have anything, please?
So, Ms. Clark, I believe it was, indicated that we didn't care or feel as strongly about the folks that live in Mountain Falls as we do about the folks who live in Beatty or Gabs or Tonopah or next door to me. Not the case. I feel exactly the same for anyone in Nye County, irregardless of what district they're in or what, anything else. So, that I found a little bit offensive, and I don't think she necessarily meant anything derogative about that, but, or derogatory about that, but it sort of rubbed me the wrong way because that's not how it is. Secondly, I work probably eleven hours a day at this, and I wouldn't have it any other way. I love this job, I love what I do, I love trying to help the people and my neighbors and everyone else in Nye County. It's not about the money, and it never was. So, that's my position on it. I thank everybody for being involved, and I hope more people get involved. This was a tough meeting for me. It was probably the worst because every single department, I would like to give them everything they need, but it became very clear to me last Thursday that that was not gonna be the case. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Cox?
Your phone's muted, I think.
I'll come back to Commissioner Carbone.
I don't have anything to add to the discussion that was already made, other than, I, you know, the person who probably, and I think I remember who the person was that said that this is when we were actually going through the process of looking at the BDRs that we had available and the discussions with NACO, the reason for the person's comment to get a raise for the Commissioners wasn't particularly for us, city-to-city Commissioners, but it was actually for trying to entice other people to start looking at this job other than people who have other financing to actually do this job. And I believe that's what the feeling was behind that request. It wasn't that we, seated here, needed to have additional money. It was for maybe some new Commissioners that would look and see if this would be a job for them, and it would be substantial enough for them to be able to live on, instead of having a retirement, or a second job, or a third job to make ends meet. So, I believe that was the, kind of the feeling of the person who made that comment.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cox, are you on the line? Okay. Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank, thank everybody that is on the line, all the Managers that are here. Soon as I'm finished. Thank you, and the audience, of course. I know we had a couple of people up in Tonopah, and all of you that come, we appreciate what you say, and good or bad, all feedback is good feedback, and we take it, and of course, there's a lot of feelings here, is right? So, I appreciate all of the management putting this together, working so diligently. This was not easy for anybody. Certainly wasn't easy for the department heads to go back and share with their staff, you know what, we still have to wait, there's no final decision, and we still have two more meetings to go, and we're doing the best that we can, and we will make the right decision for everybody all around for the county. So, with that, thank you again for coming, and I will turn it over to the District Attorney. Just give me a moment, Ms. Elliott.
And just for Manager's comments, I really do feel like I need to jump in here because statements that were made, I think are completely misguided, and to be very clear about this, and maybe the explanation wasn't good enough, so let's try it again. Number nineteen referenced a statute that when that was passed about 2015, I believe, provided for yearly increases for all of the elected officials. They put in a provision that these increases that were provided could be opted out by the Board of County Commissioners if they found that they did not have the resources to pay those increases. Those increases no longer are in effect. There are no statutory pay raises for any elected official. So, that action on number nineteen was absolutely unnecessary because there was no pay increases on the table for them to consider, and that's why there was no backup. There was nothing to back it up. There was no attempt to deceive anybody. It was something that I found this weekend when I was reviewing the agenda in preparation for this meeting, and, you know, I advised the Commissioners that it was not necessary for them to hear that item because, again, by the terms of the statute, it is no longer applicable, it's not necessary, and there was no action for them to take. There was nothing underhanded or secret by the Commissioners. Nobody was hiding anything from the backup because, again, there was absolutely no backup to provide to the public, and it's unfortunate that people are looking at it that way because, again, this is just something that, again, it was, I don't... again, this is just something that, again, it was, I don't prepare the agendas, I review the agendas in preparation for this meeting, and that's what I found, and that's why I advised them to pull item 19 because, again, there is absolutely no reason for them to take action on something that is, there's no legal basis to do so.
Thank you, Mr. DA, and I will say that, that if I was in the audience, and I was looking at, for example, number 19 and number 20, and it's, it has happened before, I would have the same, be of the same opinion and have the same perception. So, that's why I really didn't want to touch on it. I'm not upset about it. I understand, I understand both sides, of course, people are taking it personal. Please don't take it personal, but that's the perception, and we have to understand both sides of the aisle in this, this particular case. So, thank you for the second explanation. Ms. Elliott, please.
I had a fantastic manager at one time that said, Stephanie, you don't want to take that job, it's a thankless job. And I am sitting here and seeing each and every one of you, on the dais, the operational, the elected officials, you all have placed yourself in a thankless job. And I just want to be a person to stand up and say, on behalf of myself, yes, working here, but also on behalf of the public, thank you. Thank you for everything you do, thank you for your honesty, thank you for caring about the people of this community, thank you for your time. Liz, it's undeniable the amount of effort that you've put in, in the last six months for the Finance Department, and it doesn't go unnoticed. So, if it hasn't been said lately, thank you all for what you do. You are appreciated, and while there's still strives to be made within our county, and there's still some budgeting things that need to be figured out, and we still got final budgets to take care of, and yes, something needs to be fixed, and positions need to be reclassified, I'd like everybody in our community to know that each and every one of the people that are here before you today are doing what they can to make this a better place, and that's why I work here. So, thank you.
What do we need that, Stephanie?
Thank you very much. Sam, please, tell us, there are more managers on the phone with public comment, manager comment.
There are no managers on the phone, but I wanted to provide comment if I could, please?
Yes, of course.
Thank you. So, I, there was discussion about, or comments made, rather, about backup being added or not being added, or it was going to be a couple of days or something like that. I, I don't understand those conversations that were had, but I can confirm that we received the backup for items 6 and 18 late Friday afternoon, it was after 4:00 PM, and there were delays with those, that's the Town of Perump and Nye County budget assumptions. There were delays with those on the D-Tax side, and we also wanted to make time to inform the Commissioners on this meeting coming ahead. The backup was added online around 4:45 PM for both items, and it was distributed via email to the Commissioners after 5:50 PM. And so technically, the, the public received the backup before the Commissioners did. Our public binders were updated, everything was done and distributed. If, if people are signed up to receive updates from our website for agenda postings and minutes, that's great. If they're not, they, they should be. They'll get those updates from us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, manager, appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay? Liz? Well, I want to say something, on behalf of Liz.
Liz stepped up back in the fall, early fall of 2022, when the, our former Comptroller took a leave, and it may or may not have been reluctance on her part, okay? She, she really pushed us in a great direction. She's been helping us, she's been working day and night to get this budget right and to work with D-Tax, the Department of Taxation, okay, which we don't have control over, the Department of Taxation, the State Department. She still comes in when I'm either on the phone, in person, she has a smile on her face. I still don't know how she kept that smile on her face because when you push the numbers and you come to the realization of the, the condition and position, as I mentioned earlier, that we are in, I'm certain that, that a major burden fell on your, on her shoulders and on your shoulders, Liz. So I certainly appreciate everything you and your staff does with the numbers financially. I appreciate you, I appreciate all of the managers, because one person cannot do it alone. We are not Superman, Superwoman, Spiderman, okay, Wonder Woman. We like to think we are... Okay, well, Commissioner Strickland is... Aqua woman. She drills. Yeah. But I want to thank you, Liz, for, for being here today, right, and maintaining and keeping us on the straight and narrow, and, and it's not over yet because in, in next week, we have another meeting, and at the end of the month, we have another special meeting, and hopefully, we get this done, and many people will be satisfied. Staff will be satisfied, departments will be satisfied, the public will be satisfied with what we do. And so I just wanted to thank you again.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. If I may.
Of course.
It, it has been a challenging several months, but again, I do have a great team in finance, so everybody's pitched in, so it's, definitely takes a village, so definitely want to acknowledge them. As I expressed before, all the departments within Nye County have been very patient, some of them more than others, but nonetheless, so I want to acknowledge that as well.
Thank you. Okay, are we good?
So, just so, one, one last couple of sentences.
Yes, Commissioner.
You know, Liz has been, she was probably not in the position she is today, but she remembers the horrors we went through back in 2014, 15, and 16. And just before that, we started laying off people before we started giving them the payouts. Came out to about a little over 80 people we ended up having to get rid of. So we've got to remember all those bad things that we had to go through, and hopefully, in this case here, this budget that we're looking at, we haven't done that. And some of the things that the folks offered up to cover, plus the things that we talked about here, worked out well, and we haven't actually laid anybody off. And we haven't taken anybody's items off their plate that they are out there trying to put into place, other hiring people. So that's another good thing. I think we've met a goal that a lot of folks probably didn't think we could get, even though we might not have satisfied everybody's wishes, but I think we're still meeting a operation as far as the County Commission can actually operate. So, did a good job, Liz, your team did a good job. I know we didn't satisfy the public 100%, but we're only talking, you know, partially of the public, we don't know what the rest of the public wants because they're not here, which would be nice to hear their comments as well. So, again, we thank everybody for everything they've done. This is a great group, let's see if we can keep it together.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, this meeting is adjourned, it's 5:09. Thank you.